Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Lettino, San Carlos Mayor for the day. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The July 9, 2012 meeting of San Carlos City Council. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scout troop 321.
Hello. May the audience please rise? Scouts salute, and will the audience please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cover guard dismissed. The audience may be seated.
The Boy Scouts are going to show you a part of a retirement ceremony, and after that, we'll say a few words about retiring the flag, and we'll introduce the Lions Club, who's donating flags to the Adult Center and the two fired stations replacing them.
The U.S. flag is more than just some brightly colored cloth. It is a symbol of our nation.
Seven red stripes and six white stripes. Together, they represent the original thirteen colonies that gained us liberty.
The red stripes remind us of the lifeblood of brave men and women who are ready to die for this, their country.
The blue stripes, the blue is for truth and justice, like the eternal blue of the
The stars represent the fifty swords in the states of our union.
White stripes remind us of purity and cleanliness of purpose, thought, word, and deed.
The blue is for truth and justice, like the eternal blue of the star-filled heavens.
Therefore, we retire flags with dignity and respect when they become worn, torn, faded, or badly soiled.
Thank you. Thank you, Scouts. The flags the Lions Club is replacing, we'll take the cotton ones, I think the night from the fire station, our cotton ones. We'll do it at the campfire, where they burn the flag, in a ceremony similar to this. We usually have a little bit longer than this, but we don't want to do that tonight. If it's a nylon flag, like the one that came from the Adult Center, we cut it up into pieces. So, we put all the reds together and all the blue together, the white stripes together, and the white stars together, because it's a nylon flag, and it gives off toxic fumes. So, we try to recycle that flag instead of burning it at their nylon. Okay? Now, I'd like to introduce Kevin Clay, who is an Assistant Scout Master for troop 321, and he's also a Lions Club member, and he'll introduce some of the Lions Club members that are doing this project to replace the flags.
All right. Great honor to introduce some of the Lions here that are here tonight. First...
A little closer to the microphone.
Okay. First in order would be Scott Marsters, most recent immediate past president. Second would be Frank Catarucci, long time ago past president. Anal...
Torres.
Torres. Also a past president of the Lions Club. Thank you. And Tom Davids, who almost needs no introduction. He's been a club member for many, many years. So, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Scott.
And I simply want to hand these to the Boy Scouts to retire. Take the flags. And say we really appreciate the fact that you guys will take and retire these appropriately, and thank you.
Therefore, we retire the flags with dignity and respect when they become worn, torn, faded, or badly soiled.
That's it. You guys can sit down.[421.13][421.13](Applause).
Thanks, Scouts, and thanks Lions Club.
We have one more thing, real quick, here. Lions, you can stay up here with me, and I'm going to get a pair of the Lions to hang And this year, the city of San Carlos became a Tree City, USA, and the Lions thought it was appropriate that we should celebrate that, and in a manner that is befitting of the city. So, we went out, and we had a significant number of the people who are responsible for us becoming a Tree City, USA, to sign this flag. And so, we'd like to present this flag to the city, and once we do that, we would like to encourage every one of the city council members to come down and actually sign the flag, in the same way that many of the residents of this town have signed it. And thank you so much for all that you've done in order to help us to become a Tree City, USA. Don't be shy. Come on down. I've got pens.
Come on down.
Or I could bring it up to you. And we've left the whole bottom space wide open for you. And the other thing I would like to say is that we'd like to work with you to find some location where we could actually display this appropriately. The museum would be a great idea. It turns out, I actually went to the museum this weekend to get an individual to sign it, and lo and behold, we were a Tree City, USA, in the 1960s, and so, it's been fifty years since San Carlos has been a Tree City, USA. Nobody wants to sign at the bottom?
I'll sign at the bottom.
Go ahead.[578.41][578.41](Laughter).
Okay, guys, let's go hold this flag. Take a picture. Over here, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. Good to see you.
Come on, Lions.
I gotta get behind you.
Where Tom disappear to? Tom? We're doing a picture. Can I sneak behind you?[592.41][592.41](Laughter).
(Inaudible).
pin for each of you.
Thank you.
I think you may have one already. I know Matt has one. Ron, and our mayor for the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.[667.32][667.32](Applause).
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that we change, move 11B, as in boy, to the area right after 8E. In other words, right before nine, if that's appropriate.
Okay, we'll do that. Reports from closed session? Mr. City Attorney?
There are no reportable actions from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Council communication and announcements? Ms. Clapper?
I have nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, I would like to, tonight, I'd like to acknowledge and pay tribute to Morgan Bixby, a young man who grew up in San Carlos and whose funeral I attended today. He served two tours of duty in Afghanistan as a member of an elite Army Ranger unit, and was about to be sent to a third. He did not die at the hands of the enemy, but tragically by his own. Morgan was yet another victim of the horribleness of war in dealing with its aftermath. He was a fine son, a brother, a husband, a father, and a patriot. He was just 22. For every soldier that dies in the battlefield, 25 veterans will die by their own hand this year. That will be about 6,500. I believe the best way we can honor Morgan and all the others who have given their lives to this country, whether on the battlefield or not, is to end our involvement in foreign conflicts. Thank you.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I don't have anything to report at this time.
Vice Mayor Griselli?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing this evening. Thank you. Okay, I have one item to report, and that is that we did do interviews prior to the council meeting in order to appoint a new member to the Economic Development Advisory Committee, and the council chose John Seiling to be our new member to the EDAC.
Item six, public comment. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak? Item seven, approval of the consent calendar. The consent calendar's routine items passed as one item unless a member of the public or staff or council would like to discuss separately.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar.
I second the motion.
Madam Clerk, the vote?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokka?
Yes.
Reports to council, item eight. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just take a moment to thank you, our visiting mayor for the day, Daniel Lettino, who's a fourth grader at Britton Acres. I understand your parents won this in the raffle at the Spring Fling. You've been a treat to have around City Hall today. I know the mayor enjoyed his time with you. We sure appreciated meeting you, and I think you've got a big future ahead of you, and I hope we see you again in this chamber one day.
Thank you.
You did already. It was nice meeting you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say that in case the meeting doesn't proceed in a proper way, that we get Daniel back up here to continue it.[1030.01][1030.01](Laughter).
Call him the enforcer. Okay, I think we're then on item eight, A, with staff.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Deborah Nelson, the Planning Manager, and tonight, my presentation includes many pictures which help tell a story about litter. Tonight's report addresses the city council's strategic plan objective, conduct a study of litter problems in San Carlos, and present the results to the city council. Tonight's report will review the efforts since the council last addressed the issue of litter in May of 2011, and we seek direction and decision from the council moving forward. Since January of 2011, there have been 22 major accomplishments in these general categories. Mandatory commercial and multifamily recycling was adopted. Zoning and municipal code amendments came in the form of the zoning ordinance update, which includes standards for trash enclosures. And there have also been municipal code amendments for outdoor dining and retail sales. The poly-styrene food container ban went into effect July 1. A countywide EIR addressing single-use plastic bags was released in June, and San Carlos is participating in this countywide effort. Cleanups and cleanouts occur prior to and just after the beginning of the storm season with city crews cleaning out catch basins. Street sweeping is conducted two times a week in commercial areas, twice in the flat areas of the city, and once per month in the rest of the community. The landscape contractors conducting city parking lot maintenance also pick up litter. There's been installation of devices and receptacles under a grant. Sixty-three devices have been installed in catch basins, which are cleaned four times a year. Ecology conducts outreach, and the city is contracted with San Mateo County for code enforcement. I went too fast on the slides. The city is collaborating with the county to write an administrative citation ordinance. So, last year, the council adopted this rotary receptacle as the downtown standard, and designated $50,000 in the CIP for purchase of receptacles over and above the 11 that the Rotary Club had donated to the city. However, these receptacles have proven difficult to clean in high-volume disposal areas, and staff recommends that you adopt a second standard for downtown trash receptacles. And these rotary ones will be located to other areas that don't accumulate as much litter in the downtown. The replacement receptacles have been tested for a number of months in the San Carlos Avenue-Loral Street intersection adjacent to Starbucks. Staff proposes the purchase of more of these receptacles of this style, utilizing the remaining budget, which is approximately $38,000, and these will be placed in the high-volume areas. Last year, the city council also recommended that staff elicit the help of volunteers. So, in June, four volunteers, the city volunteer coordinator, Teagan Lazaroni, and I, conducted a survey of downtown litter. We chose a Wednesday afternoon, and we wanted to see if the presence of more shoppers of takeout food on Wednesdays, that is, the schools that let out early on Wednesdays, resulted in too much trash in existing receptacles. Volunteers Bruce Barnes and Kathy Bibby collected data measuring distances from the front door of businesses. We wanted to see how far it is to walk to a receptacle, and they picked up litter. And volunteers Joyce Schofield and Lane Trippi took notes and made observation about where litter occurs. What we found, and we were pleasantly surprised, the trash receptacles were not overflowing on a Wednesday afternoon when there's lots of takeout being purchased. We also found that there does seem to be a correlation between that takeout and the litter on the street. What we did observe in general terms was that litter is where people sit downtown. Most food business sidewalks are very clean. Some businesses provide their own receptacles. And there's an accumulation of litter at frontage of banks. There's accumulation of litter at frontage of some food/beverage/alkohol service businesses, and there's pet litter. We found only one food spill not cleaned up. Litter is most prevalent around areas where people sit, and the trash receptacles in these very same areas are not always close enough to where the people sit. Drink containers, cigarette butts, and small bits of paper are found around the benches and in the planter boxes. Coffee and drink containers are prevalent. Cups, drink containers, and cigarette butts are in the public landscaping, and they're in the private landscaping, which also collects blown paper. Litter occurs around some types of businesses. We noticed that drink containers, receipts, cigarette butts accumulate around the banks. Some food service businesses with outdoor dining in proximity to food service open at night are also accumulation points, particularly of cigarette butts. There's also litter at the curb, and that could be deposited there, it could be blown there, or, as one merchant reported, it's sometimes swept there. Some food service businesses are very clean. Even in this location, when there's not a city trash receptacle, even on the same block, Tooty-Fruity is quite clean, as are Bean Kinney and Harmony Yogurt are a couple of examples of very clean storefronts. Some food service businesses have their own receptacles on property. Speederia provides a receptacle in their outdoor dining area, actually on a tree wall. In the case of Bean Kinney, we don't know, because I didn't go in and ask, but it's about a half a block long, and even the city planters and the curb is quite clean in front of that food service. Some banks provide receptacles on their own property. But a big issue is cigarette butts. More than once, we observed smokers seated. We didn't watch to see what they did to dispose of the cigarette residue, but we did observe cigarette butts on the ground in planters and at the curb. And in this location on the left, and the trash receptacle being tested, Public Works also tested an ash receptacle, which hooked on the trash, it rhymes, on the trash can, but it didn't prove secure enough and disappeared on more than one occasion, so they stopped buying replacements. There are a couple of ash receptacles in Laurel Park where people sit, and the Public Works staff is currently looking at other models that we might purchase. These are about $250 each. Their dimensions are 15-inch diameter at the base, the tube parts about four inches around, and their height is about 40 inches. If we went to purchasing these, it would be our staff that cleans them. Ecology does not collect anything that might have fire within it for protection of the disposal trucks. On the catch devices, it's represented here on the left, a square box in the catch basins, and we received a grant to install 63 of these throughout the community. What we have discovered with cleanout, or Public Works staff, I should say, has discovered, is it does keep litter from going to the bay. Cigarette butts, again, drink containers, trash, lots of paper, and as you see in that sonnet picture, leaves. The crews clean these out four times a year, and they recently cleaned out the 10 close to the downtown area, and that goes in our reports with our stormwater permit. Other citywide efforts for litter control are street sweeping and the city parking lot maintenance. Ecology also participates in a number of ways in addition to pick up. They provide banding devices for the tops of containers to help reduce windborne litter. They require cleanup of Shoreway Road once per day. They will work directly with businesses, as they did with Starbucks at the corner of Laurel and San Carlos, and they offer training to the vendors that participate in special events. There are also other volunteer efforts, including the Chamber volunteers to pick up litter after the close of the farmer's market, and the Lions Club, which has taken over the Adopt and Intersection Program started by former mayor Tom Davids. Cleanup is conducted once per month. This crew and the photographer, council member Olbert, were out picking up litter at Holly and 101 on July 7. Last year, you also asked us to collaborate with the Chamber, and this will be an ongoing effort, and will include work with those special event vendors on training. The Public Works staff reports that sometimes their trash ends up in the city's cans. Sometimes the liners of the city cans are missing after a special event, so it seems important that we make sure that they have enough receptacles and that they remove their own trash. We'll do outreach to businesses. The Chamber will help with assistance of marketing, the sponsorship on the new receptacles, which have a band or a little square where advertising can occur. They will assist with getting the word out to businesses about what part of the sidewalk, including the curb, they're responsible to keep clean, and they're talking about creating a recognition program for clean business. There could be other ways to tell the story. We could use the citywide newsletter, or e-news, or San Carlos TV to brag about the good work that's happened, because there has been a lot. And also, perhaps, to use it in ways that lets people know other things that they could do to help keep their city a good living. So, this evening, we recommend that you approve the additional standard for the downtown, that you give us some feedback on ash receptacles, and we'll come back to you with how many we think there should be, maybe designed. They're about $250 each. It'll be a nominal cost to clean them out, because the staff, Public Works staff, does go out and washes the trash cans, they could empty the ash receptacles. That happens once or twice per month. You could also provide us direction. You considered this last year on... You could also provide us direction, you considered this last year, on another street sweeping day in the downtown, moving it from two to three. You recently saved up $8,000 in the existing street sweeping contract. If you added another day downtown, it would be 11, about $11,700. And also provide us direction on your interest in publicizing both our good works and kind of a did you know?
Through the mayor, if I may just clarify really quick. We're actually not looking for you to adopt the new standards tonight. This is an information-only item. It's not on the action calendar. So we're looking for you to discuss, rather, provide feedback. And if the new standard and the other information that was provided to you, we would bring that back on a future consent calendar.
All right. Thank you. Is that the?
That's my report.
That's your report.
I'm available as are some.
Are you open for questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So any questions for staff on?
I do not have any questions at this time. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. That was very good to hear about what's going on. Thank you.
Mr. Obert has a few questions.
Actually, just one clarifying question. Thank you. Just to be clear, so if we were to go to a third day per week of street sweeping, it's not an incremental $11,700. It's that the total bill for the street sweeping would be $11,700?
No, it would be an additional $11,700.
It would be an additional $11,700.
For a year, to do it one more time per week.
Okay.
Currently, I think it's $83,000, is that right?
Yes.
For the total tab?
Yeah.
So, okay. Any other questions? Let's hear from Mr. Davids, who wanted to, is this the item, Tom? You spend a little bit of time downtown, right, Mr. Davids?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Yeah, I have. This is one of my favorite subjects, next to flowers and next to Laurel Street itself. So I think that the city has a lot to gain by looking at these recommendations carefully and adopting them if possible. My own experience downtown, in terms of who's doing what, is that people, at least a 95% or higher level, are willing to throw things in trash if there's a trash to throw it into. I don't think they're willing to cross the street to find one. I don't know that they're willing to put it in their pocket until they come across one. And I think the bottom line is that we need as many as we can get. I walked the street again this morning, and I think that each block has one or two locations where another trash container would be appropriate. Especially at the pedestrian walkthroughs, mid-block pedestrian, there are at least two locations on the west side of Laurel where there are no trash containers. And I think that it's a logical place for it, considering the ballbouts and so forth. So I highly endorse as many containers as we can get. The third day a week, I think, is appropriate. You can tell when the people have been through cleaning, everything looks very, very good. It doesn't take long to get a little messy, though. And depending upon the amount of wind and other things going on, you know, it's kind of like dusting your house. It's, looks pretty good after the first day, and then the second, third day, it starts to look a little grim again. So I think that going an extra day would be money well spent. I think also that it's appropriate to, well, just one other point on the kind of litter. Ms. Nelson mentioned various things that the survey had found. I think that's all right on. There is a need for additional work during the fall in the leaves haul. And the leaves tend to get a little wet, and then they stick, and they end up in ballbouts. And unless you get in and really sweep them out, you really can't clean them. So the fall does require an additional effort to take care of the leaves. Then as far as the spreading the word, I think these are appropriate and good opportunities to let people know. I would like to see, if possible, some sort of a campaign, you know, don't waste, or don't litter, or there's some clever names I'm sure we could come up with. Other cities have done it, have posters. Let everyone know we've added the cleanup. And we expect, we would appreciate them to accommodate the need. I think for the most part, people are not going to throw away if there's an opportunity to put it in a litter container. I don't think very many are willing to bend over and pick something up that has ended up there in some way. But I think if we let them know that we're all in this together, and it takes a city and a community to make Laurel Street look as good as it should, I believe that they'll accommodate. And many will join the crowd and will have a much cleaner-looking street. So those are my comments, and hopefully that we.
Hold on for a question there, if you would, Tom. I would be curious your opinion on the one item that was brought up, and that is the cigarette butts, which end up all over the place, and especially up against the curbs.
I think that if you swept the street, the dominant piece of litter would be cigarette butts. And that's going to take some doing, because someone gets out of their car, they dump it, they step on it. You know, that's been a tradition for decades, and it's going to be tough to break. But I think that if there's a place to put it, if they're reminded that it's a safe place, we want to keep the street, I think over time, it can change. And I think there are areas that may not be so obvious. One sister city lane, it's a great place for smokers, and they use it. But there's no place to put the butts, and they're on the ground. Just one example. But I think any place you have a place for people to sit, especially, that when it's done, it's done, it's on the ground, they grind it out, and we deal with it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. And thank you, staff, for the presentation.
I have one follow-up.
Yes, go ahead.
Question that came to my mind from Mr. Malphey. In Ms. Nelson's presentation, she was talking about the role of the Chamber and the variety of things that they do. And what wasn't clear to me was, are those things that they're going to be doing in the future, is that covered by the, what is currently in the budget? Because I know we changed the budget for what the Chamber is doing, and it's not clear to me which of these things they're doing under a contract with us versus things they just do for the community.
I'll ask Ms. Nelson to make that clarification.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You know, we didn't talk about money. We talked about goodwill and being good business people downtown. So I, we can confirm that, but my impression was that, you know, San Carlos, as you've heard in a number of presentations on a number of issues, there are communities all over the country that would like to have a downtown like San Carlos. So people are proud of it, and they want it to be even better. So, but we'll have that follow-up conversation.
Well, that's good to hear. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't talking about what they've done in the past, but that's going to change, and we need to be looking at that.
Well, in meeting even with a bank representative on the board, she said, oh, my gosh, you're right. I should be out here sweeping the front of my business. So it's kind of an education even to business owners, and they all want their downtown to be a place where people come and shop, so.
I think you made a good point there. Some of the restaurants I know, for instance, the one Mexican restaurant in the 600 block, I see him out there every other day mopping and cleaning up his frontage. But when you own a bank, or when you manage a bank, it's probably not quite as obvious that your business may be causing some trash with their deposit envelopes and so forth, or customers being in front of the bank, waiting for, doing an ATM transaction, so they might be smoking a cigarette and standing there and throwing the cigarette down. Who knows why the trash is there, but it is.
Coffee cup.
But it's probably less obvious to them that they, you know, need to get out front and do some cleanup to make everything look nice. It's probably the deal. I think Mr. Obert has another question.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Nelson. I had a couple of other questions that I thought of after you'd first sat down. First off, did the survey look at any other part of Laurel Street or San Carlos other than the north end?
No, we only looked at the downtown core, at least with the volunteers. The Public Works staff has lots of information, and Paul Baker might be able to answer questions that are directed at other parts of town.
Actually, that's okay. I mean, unless, do we have any sense that the story is different in different parts of Laurel Street?
No.
Okay.
No. I would suspect that food service business that wants customers, keep them clean, and that where people sit also accumulates litter. But we did not do the walk that far.
Okay. The other question I had is one I should have thought to ask you before, which is, and I have no idea what kind of metric one would use for this, but perhaps just your intuition, your sense of how does San Carlos rank in terms of, or where do we stack up in terms of litter problems in our downtown core area versus some of our neighboring communities? In other words, relatively speaking?
Well, having worked in a lot of, I think it is, a pride of place has a lot to do with whether or not there's litter, I think. I also think, and I did not find out the standard for Disneyland, but when you think about, and Mr. Davids mentioned this too, that you need that receptacle at the appropriate distance that you will carry whatever it is you're carrying, and then you look for a trash receptacle. And we probably don't have enough if we use the standard of how far will you walk before you need to throw something away. I did, last year, Mayor Gocott had suggested we call Carmel. So I did do that. I talked with the Public Works staff there. They don't, where there is a downtown business association, I think you have the cleanest because they pay, and there is a contract to keep things clean. Carmel doesn't, but it is so dependent on tourism, and they have lots of street sweeping and actually trash cleanup of every can twice per day. So they spend a lot more money on, as a community, on the cleanup. But they also have a huge daytime population of tourists.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'd just like to throw in a couple of comments, and then I think a little bit of discussion so that staff gets an idea of direction, at least, on where we want to go with these recommendations. But to your question, Mr. Obert, about what the rest of the downtown may look like, or the rest of Laurel Street, really, that's something that my wife and I frequently walk is from our place on, we're over here on Walnut, and we walk all the way through on Laurel down to Eaton, and then turn around and come back. And my take on it is that the real problem area is the 6, 7, and 800 block. You get much beyond that, and you really don't have much of a trash problem. I think something that was missing from this volunteer effort, which of course we appreciate very much, is if you go the other direction on San Carlos Avenue out here and get in front of CVS Market, they, in front of their property, and not just on their property, but along the street in front of their property, along the sidewalk, there's oftentimes a lot of trash there. And one of the things we're going to be looking at later, I suppose, is coming up on our agenda, is plastic bags. And if there's any one business that has a lot of, you know, a lot of plastic bags, and I say a lot, I mean, it's, you know, one or two once in a while, but you see them blowing down the street, they get caught in the trees and so forth, and they're from CVS. And so if we're going to do an outreach program and do some education with the businesses, I don't know what we could do with that business to encourage them to maybe have some kind of education program of their own with their customers or something, especially if we're, depending on which way we go with the plastic bags, if they get kept, then CVS needs to do something as a responsible business about their bags. And then that also makes me think of one more area where we do have a trash problem that obviously would be beyond the scope of the volunteers, and that is over in the area of Home Depot and Lucky's and so forth, and especially on the one side of Lucky's on Howard Avenue. For some reason, you see a lot of trash there, too, that gets caught up in the landscaping and the plant material that they have along their building there. And so that's another area that seems to be a problem area. So if we're going to do some kind of program and outreach and so forth, I think we should go to those businesses as well. So with that, let's open it up for a little bit of discussion, just so that the staff can get an idea of what direction, we're not taking action, but we can give some discussion so they get an idea of what we want to see brought back to the dais for action and what we don't. Any comments?
Yeah. I think all the, the first, the third, and the fourth, I'm certainly in favor of. The second one, I'm a little bit concerned about, that you indicated that the add-ons, Ms. Nelson, to the receptacles disappeared at $250 a pop. Unless you're going to nail them down, I'm a little concerned about buying lots and lots of those, maybe a couple to try it, see if they last a week before somebody takes them home. I mean, that's concerning to me. So I think it's a good idea, but if, I would hesitate to buy dozens, and then all of a sudden, three weeks later, we don't have them anymore. That's unfortunate. I'm really surprised that people have to take that out. They took it out of the thing. I don't know what they do with it. But these things look, you know, maybe they'd have some use for them. Anyway, that's my comments.
Very good. Others?
Yeah, I share Mr. Gossily's comments. One, three, and fourth. I mean, it's kind of like, you know, how can you be against any of these things, except that they do cost money? But it all sounds good. I would like to hear more recommendations from the staff, and specifically, you know, what could work as ash receptacles, and to what extent do we require any of the businesses that have outdoor, have tables and chairs outside their businesses? Do we require them to have any kind of trash receptacles? And can we add on to that an ash receptacle? So that that's at least a starting point for capturing this litter and make it partly the responsibility of the businesses. And then we can figure out where we need the supplemental coverage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'd like to follow on something that Ms. Clapper said, but build on it a little bit. I think actually, if I understand correctly, the city does have some ordinances about maintaining a neat, pardon me, not necessarily storefront, sidewalk front, I'm not sure what the term is. And I would certainly support staff taking the appropriate steps to, whether it's a combination of enforcement or working with the Chamber, or creating programs to educate people and to encourage them to beautify things. I think those are all good ideas. As far as the specific recommendations are concerned, the first one I'm okay with. The remainers, frankly, even the street sweeping, I would just like a little bit of input from staff at some point as to whether there's a sufficient bang for the buck out of that. I don't pretend to be an expert on street sweeping, and I presume there's some logic behind why we do two days a week rather, or twice a week as opposed to something else. But in general, what I would like to see happen is more of a raising awareness on the part of everybody in the community to try and improve things, not necessarily launching all sorts of new programs or acquisitions to attack the problem.
Mr. Collins?
Just one comment. I'm generally in favor of all the recommendations. I think we just should find out if the, or what other cities do with these ash receptacles and how they control whether or not they're stolen. Can't be that difficult. Secure them.
And the only other comments that I would add are, one of the things I heard from Mr. Davids in his comments, and I would echo them, is, and I don't see it up here necessarily, is that we might want to look at some key locations where we would add trash receptacles, and if staff could take a look at that and bring it back to us if it needs approval because it's over the budget amount or the amount that we authorize for expenses without coming to council, then I guess bring it back. And I think this is part of number four, but to, and I also heard this through Mr. Davids saying this, is a campaign coordinated with the Chamber for education and outreach to the businesses so that they can look at how their business may be adding to what we're having as a trash problem, and get some creative ideas from them on how they might help us to solve that problem. And I think part of that problem also is talking to certain businesses. I don't want to pick on anybody, but I even know, like, where I go to coffee at the plantation, I've sat there and watched customers who are friends of mine, people I talk to, just finish a cigarette and then flick it behind them to the curb, and that's it. And so maybe talking to these businesses, see if there's not something they can do to put in some ash receptacles. And I think probably ones that are, the problem I had with ones I saw in the picture, they look too flimsy. look too flimsy. And I think a trash receptacle, or an ash receptacle like that, needs to be something that's heavy and big, and it's got lots of sand in it, so they can put their cigarettes out in it. It's a little bit like, I don't want to be crude here, but it's a little bit like something that gentlemen do in the bathroom, and don't always hit the receiver correctly, and that's what cigarettes are a little bit like. If it's not, if it's too small, you said 15 inches, that's too tiny. If it's something big, when you're smoking a cigarette, you know, it's got to be, I think, on the large side. And that's it for me. So those are the comments. You guys can take those and bring them back as you see fit. Mr. Olbert?
Yes, I just wanted to actually raise a process question, and just ask a general question, because I'd like to, I want to make sure I understand where my colleagues are coming from. Process question is, I think it's, in terms of giving staff direction, that we'd like to see some efforts done to reduce litter or trash and whatnot in the town. I'm wondering to what extent these things actually have to come back to council? I worry a little bit sometimes that, that what we're doing is setting precedence for bringing back sort of relatively small things. So I'd just like to understand the process and how that works.
That's why I made the comment, that if it, if it's over the, what is it, 50,000, then they're going to have to bring it back. If it's not over 50,000, then some of these things they can just take action on, work with the chamber, et cetera.
Just do.
Right.
The other thing, just for my own edification, I'd be interested in my colleagues' perception about whether or not we actually have, in their minds, a trash problem in San Carlos. Not, I mean, things can always be better, I'm just wondering whether we have a trash problem. Because I will, I will start off by saying that I'm not sure that I necessarily see that we have a trash problem.
My opinion, we have a location problem in certain places, certain corners, certain spots.
Oh, I see.
I agree. I don't think we have a overall problem, to be quite blunt at all, but you, the micro spots, and I can pick out four or five, just like that, that's where the problem is. And that's, that's really the way I look at it, personally. I don't want to name those, but.
Like I, I'm the mayor, I can do that.
Right. But if you ask me, I'll tell you.
Any other comments?
No, I would agree with Mr. Griselli's response to you, Mr. Olbert, that, yeah, there's certain locations, and it may be as businesses come into town and leave that those locations will change. So having, like Ms. Nelson said, you know, making sure that we do have trash receptacles within easy walking distance, I think is a good way to, to cover that without having them be an excessive number, that we do need to work within the dollars that we set aside. So, or be able to justify that it's really important to increase that number.
Okay.
And my impression is that, you know, we have a nice city here, and it's a little bit like if you have a nice car that's brand new and shiny, and then, you know, you go into Lucky's to get your groceries or wherever, and you walk out and someone has banged their door into your door, now you don't have a shiny new car anymore, and you notice that spot, and you notice it all the time. And, you know, we have a, we have a nice town, we have a nice downtown, and so when you have these few hotspots where you, you get this, some trash, you notice it, and it's, it tends to be a little off-putting, so.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll pardon me, I'm smiling about your analogy, which I think is a good one, although.
Your door was dinged recently?
No, no, no. Actually, it is one of the reasons why every new car I've ever owned, I have always, not in a very noticeable way, but I've always keyed it myself, because then I get over that problem.
There you go. Okay, but no, no throwing trash downtown on your part, just to, okay. All right, I think we've given direction on this item. Brings us to item 8B, which is another informational item.
All right, so Al, I may need your help here. Oh, where are they?
That's item 8C, I think, or something.
8D? It's me again, Deborah Nelson, Planning Manager.
Okay, thank you.
This item is also on the council strategic plan to report to you on the process and fees involved in the residential plant design review process. First, a little history. Residential design review has been in practice in the zoning ordinance since 1988, and reaffirmed several times since. Recently, in the general plan, also, it was reaffirmed in the stakeholder interviews for the zoning ordinance, and included in the new zoning ordinance, residential design review is a service that San Carlos values. Residential design review is applied at the staff level or by the residential design review committee, which we refer to as RDRC, to all areas west of the downtown core and single-family residential neighborhoods shown, and it's sort of pale yellow, yellow and the darker yellow. So it's quite a bit of the acreage of the town. The most recent zoning ordinance emphasizes form-based design, including neighborhood character, scale, and transitions. It also includes numeric standards. Specifically, design review is an evaluation of building proportions, massing, and architectural detail, site design and orientation, exterior materials, though we do no longer look at color, setbacks, coverage, and height, these are the numeric standards. We also look at paving, fences, walls, and screening, planting, and landscaping. There's no maximum single-family residential house size limitation in San Carlos. Instead, design review is triggered by a series of thresholds in the code. Decision-making is at several levels, and the process is continually refined. Over time, most certainty about standards for review and the process for applicants, neighbors, and the reviewing body have evolved. Small projects receive staff review in the planning division in conjunction with the building permit process. Those are less than 120, or greater than 120 square feet of addition. There's no notice for those, and they generally occur within days, no longer than a week. Medium-sized projects are also reviewed by staff, and a courtesy notice is sent to neighbors 10 days prior to a decision. For the second-story additions, there is not a courtesy notice. For first-story additions, we hope that people talk to one another. And those are on houses that are less than 3,000 square feet in total square footage. The residential design review committee includes a notice. New homes go to residential design review, and projects meeting a threshold for review by that committee include a notice. The process also includes staff reports and a meeting with RDC, which is much like a hearing. The thresholds in the code for the RDRC review is, as I mentioned, new homes, additions creating total square footage of a house where it is greater than 3,000 square feet, additions creating total square footage where it's greater than, the house size is greater than 40% of the equivalent of the lot size, additions on slope of 5% are greater, and that's a sliding scale based on the slope. And then, from time to time, upon referral, when the process of going to RDRC could benefit the design of a particular project and a neighborhood input. The turnaround time, except for when they come in as a building permit less than 120 square feet, turnaround time increases with the complexity and level of review from one week to less, or less, to a month or more. Staff decisions are appealable to the RDRC, and if RDRC decision is appealed, the appeal is to the planning commission, not to the city council. I mistakenly reported it was appealed to the council. That adds another link to the process in an appeal situation. So the city council requested we look at fees of other jurisdictions, and our survey indicates that San Carlos generally compares to the average in a range of seven other peninsula cities, and most of the San Carlos fees are comparable or lower. And one of your attachments had a number of footnotes. Each city does it differently, they regularize it to what their communities want, but we presented these fees as the most average we could figure. The current fees reflect the 2009 cost recovery model that was adopted by the city council, and a cost, the cost recovery model includes direct staff time, the noticing, the RDRC review committee meeting process when applicable, and the city's overhead. And the overhead in the context of that 2009 study by NBS, the fee study annualized cost components, including indirect labor costs, allocated indirect nonlabor costs, and allocated indirect organization-wide overhead. In 2009, a cost recovery rate of 50% rather than 100% was established for the new home portion of the residential design review. The other design review was established at 100% cost recovery. And the 50% for new homes, the council's decision considered the high cost to applicants of that full cost recovery, which at the time was $5,400 for a new home review would have been. And so they considered that cost compared to the community-wide benefit of design review for new homes. In other words, the community as a whole benefits from design review, which evaluates a new home and provides for community engagement in the process. New homes make a bigger change to a neighborhood, so the whole community benefits from that In addition to surveying cities, we sent a survey instrument to architects, designers, and builders, and that was a list of 60 that have been through our process since July of 2009, when the cost recovery fee was established. The response rate to the survey on a, we did an online one and a mailed one, was 10% of the online one, and when we added in the written responses, it was about 16% response rate. But nonetheless, these responses represented both ends of the spectrum in terms of satisfaction and process and fees. Most comments were positive, neither the process or the fees are dissentive to doing business in San Carlos. There were, however, at least one comment about high fees, and there were also comments about the plan check process, which is through the building permit, and the council has addressed that issue in your newly adopted budget. Overall, the satisfaction level and responses to questions is generally quite high. We represented these as percentages on a number of the questions. And we're always working to improve the process. We have, or we will, created new handouts for the new zoning ordinance. We continue to collaborate as a staff so that the applicants receive consistent information, no matter who they talk to at the counter. We are always refining, and we will conduct another survey in the spring of 2013, because in our budget-based program process, this is one of our major programs, and it's important that we continue to do surveys. Approximately .8 FTE is devoted to the residential design process. The revenue from applications in the past fiscal year for just those that go to RDRC was slightly over $74,000. So should the council decide to lower fees, there would be a reduction in revenue, and then either a reduction in staffing levels, which would lead to lower processing time, or to maintain the same level of service, we'd reduce staffing to commit to other activities so we could maintain the same level of service in RDRC process. So tonight, we're asking that you give us a little direction on your interest in a revised fee schedule, or not a revised fee schedule, or other direction. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Olbert? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Nelson, just one quick question. Looking at the table you had where you were, you were comparing San Carlos fees to the average of other cities, I noticed for the line for new homes that it's order of magnitude the same. And I, am I, would be, would I be correct in concluding from that, that the other cities that you were surveying or included in the survey also give new homes a break on the fees, just like we do?
Yes, some of them foster city, hardly any fee at all. Hillsborough, you'd expect they'd have a big fee, their fee is quite small. Those communities that use an outside architectural committee or an outside architect to review plans tend to be higher, because the billing rate for those folks are generally higher. And in some cases, $2,000, $3,000 is a starting point, and then there are add-ons. There are actually some communities that have a fee for every time you come back to the counter. So we don't do that, we talk to you as much as you'd like to be talked to, so.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just have a couple. I noticed that when, in this section where you talk about an RDRC review is triggered by any of the following, I don't see anything in there about the actual footprint of the home. And I remember years ago, we had a requirement that the footprint of an addition couldn't be more than, as I recall, something like 45% of the lot size. Do we still have anything like that?
Yes, it's, we refer to it as coverage, and it's 50%. It went from 40% in the old zoning ordinance to 50%, and that was a recognition that houses are getting bigger, and San Carlos has a relatively, many of the lots are relatively small, so for people to achieve a size of house that they would like, that a 50% coverage met more of their needs.
Okay, so my sense of houses getting bigger was not in my, not my imagination.
Yes, very few people live in bungalows.
And it looks to me like in the survey that people are generally agreeable with the fees that we charge?
Yeah, we don't, we don't get a lot of reports of they're too high compared to other communities, or that they feel high compared to, say, the expense of the remodel they're doing.
So you don't get a sense that our fees drive people away on any inordinate level?
No, not from our experience at the counter and the, the survey, except in a couple instances, didn't show that. Now, it was, it was a small sample size, and hopefully by next spring, we'd have a bigger sample size.
So your, your, the survey, does that sort of bear out, I mean, does it sort of coincide with, with what your general sense of the public's reaction was, I mean, that you see on a, on a daily basis?
Yeah, I think even in the sample size, it says what we see on a daily basis. People are pretty happy with us. The stakeholder interviews, which, for the zoning ordinance, people said they are happy with the service they get, with the exception of plan check, which you already addressed.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Okay.
I have one question, yes. I was wondering, you were talking about, you do the survey, asking the folks that have come in with their requests, but also with staff, is there any way in which you track or survey then the number of hours that are being spent on the different applications, you know, by code or something like that, so that you can see how much, what is the range of time, what's the least amount of time, or the most amount of time that it takes to process these different kinds of applications?
Well, and that's a really good point. And it seems that even though we've been working on process improvements to make it easier, the better we are at design review, and the more time we spend with people make it easier, it seems like that correlates to more time we spend with people. So actually, the .8 FTE is a slight increase from several years ago, when it was .6, and we had just a part-time person here doing it. So, and we take, we take input at the counter, we take phone calls, we do night meetings. So sometimes the reward for being good at what you do is more of what you do well at.
Well, I was curious, when you talk about full cost recovery, if we, if we had a sense of, you know, what is the minimum and maximum amount that, that it actually costs us to provide those services?
It was, the NBS study in 2009 was an average. And we make a judgment at the counter regarding these ones, particularly in And we make a judgment at the counter regarding these ones, particularly in the middle of whether or not they go to residential design review committee, or whether we charge a minor fee or a major fee. So we do do some judgment with those that are more difficult. Also, if some come back a number of times, we have not charged for the extra staff time, but we've charged for the extra hearing notice time.
Okay. And then that .8 FTE, does that include the overtime for the RDRC meetings themselves?
Yes.
It does? Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
So the question I had regards, in the process, if a project, for the fees that are being charged, do you have any idea how much of that incorporates the cost from the time staff has to prepare for an RD, what do you call it, an RD?
RDRC.
RDRC meeting, and actual attendance at the RDRC meeting?
The average, the fee study did not consider the time spent at the counter before it comes of an application. So it includes from the time it's submitted to us, which might be a couple back and forth to get it to be a complete application through the hearing, and it was based on an average. So we don't necessarily track each time. The city's, number of years ago, five years ago, or four years ago, when you established in-house planners rather than consultant planners, we stopped doing time cards that are in 15-minute increments that show time to specific projects. So these were, in 2009, the fees were based on average time spent, reported by the staff that does those.
Yeah. So how's that average time, how do you gather that data?
At the time, looking at the workloads of each staff person, how many applications came in relative to the other work we were doing, and what the total department, total time was, divided by the types of applications we processed, that was one of the factors.
So, in other words, there's no staff member, when one of these applications come in, there's no staff member actually writing down, "I started on the Smith project, you know, at 9:00 a.m. this morning, and I worked on it until noon. I went to lunch, and I came back, and I worked on it from 1:00 o'clock to 2:00, and that was it for the Smith project." You don't have any of that?
We don't do that since 2009, when the council moved to the average cost for these.
That's interesting. Now, I wonder, well, the reason I asked the question I did is, I wonder about our process. You know, our process tends to be, I'll call it collaborative, where you're collaborating, if you're going to do a project, you're collaborating with your neighbors in some respect by informing them of what you intend to do, and then the idea of the meeting is to give a hearing so that if your neighbors have some issues with what it is you are doing, there's a forum to vet some of those things, and get their neighbor's ideas on, you know, maybe you move a window or something like that, so they can keep their privacy that they want. And that's not something they necessarily wanted to do across the fence, but if they were at a city hall in a meeting, and there was a referee of sorts with the staff, then they're willing to do that. And so that seems to me the nub of the process. So I'm wondering if we took in the applications, and then, you know, asked the applicant to A, go talk with their neighbors, as we do now, but also did a formal notification, you need send out the reduced set of drawings, and if you don't get any interest from the neighbors for a hearing, then simply don't have a hearing, and maybe you save the applicant the money on that hearing and that time, and the fees could come down. Here's, I can tell the council, I'm the one that brought this up, and the reason I did is because my feeling was, as, you know, doing business in this area, I was feeling like, not that our fees are too high relative to other cities, I didn't care about that because I don't sit on a city council in any other city. But I figured, you know, I do business here on occasion and bring in projects, and, you know, I sit on the city council, so maybe there's something I can do with this, in respects to this. And the last project I turned in to San Carlos is, this last, is about the turn of the year, so it was January, February. My fees to the client for designing the project was, I looked it up, it was $3,480 for a second-story addition. The city charged the client $1,981 for the application to the RDRC, or whatever it's called. That's 57% of my fee was charged to the client. And I can tell you that part of my fee, about $1,000 bucks, was putting together the site plan and the floor plan and the elevations to turn in to the city. So the client, when the client was happy with his project, if we did have to go through this process with the city, he could have saved another $1,000. Instead, he spent another, almost $3,000, between what I charged and what the city charged. And that, to me, seems impactful on the market. And as I was saying before, the days are gone where, if you as a designer or architect are sitting at the table with a potential client at their kitchen table, and you get done with that interview, and they say, "Great, let's go forward." Those days are gone. What happens now is they say, "Okay, we enjoyed meeting you. Can you provide us with at least some cost estimates of what it might cost us if we go forward with you?" And what I've been doing is looking up projects on their scope, and including, if I know, if I'm familiar with the city, and I've been through their process, and I know what the fees might be, I include that. And what I'm finding is people are being a little bit more cautious about going forward with projects. And so that was the impetus for my questioning, what this city is charging for our fees, and if other council members at other cities on the peninsula want to do the same thing, have at it. But that was my impression, is that when you look at the full incorporation of fees from the professional to the municipality, it does get to be where it's a decision-making factor regarding projects, and given the market that we're in. So that's why I asked for it, and wanted us to look at it. And my take on it would be, if there's something, A, we should be tracking those hours. The way my client knows how much I'm billing for is because I sent him a spreadsheet that shows him the first day I stepped on their property to measure their house, till I got through with the city and the design review process. And I log every hour, and I give it to them, and I charge them for it. If the city's not doing the same thing, I would suggest the city doesn't really have a good grasp of what a fair fee is on these projects. That's number one. And number two, if there's something we can do to this process, like I said, we're collaborative in this city, the way we approach it, we could go through the process of, this applicant turns in drawings, they get sent to the neighbors. If there's no reason to have a RCDC meeting because the neighbors aren't saying anything, don't have it, and save the client the money. So, discussion.
Well, I'll jump in here, having chaired RDRC for a year, in the second year of my three-year term on the planning commission, and having also been involved in the recent update of the zoning ordinance, which part of the, one of the goals of taking a look at the zoning ordinance was to see, are there some situations where staff can do the review, as I call it here, administrative review, rather than coming to RDRC? And I believe the update was effective in that way to identify some situations where it didn't need to go to RDRC and therefore be subject to the additional fees. And as you were talking, I was thinking back to the different projects that came into RDRC. And I'm not sure that there are any of them that I think would have been appropriate to have not been reviewed by RDRC. There definitely were situations where there was no one else from the neighborhood who came in, but there were very often comments in our staff packets from the outreach that the homeowner had to do, or their architect had to do, but generally it was the homeowner in reaching out to people. And there were sometimes follow-up emails that were included in our packets. So I feel like we have been taking a look at this, based on my experience, just looking at the RDRC part of it. I'm not addressing the administrative review fees because I'm not that familiar with it. But I do agree with you in terms of having a good understanding as a city of, you know, how many hours are going into this? Because if we are in a full cost recovery mode, how do we know that we are recovering those full costs if we're not real sure what the full costs are? And my experience in looking at how an organization identifies what its costs are is, you do need to track how people are spending their time, even if it's not writing down when they started and when they stopped, at least being able to take a day and saying, you know, 50% of my day was spent on all of these RDRC projects. So that's my experience as it relates to this particular item.
Question for staff, when's the next time we review these fees? Next time we look at fees next year with the budget?
Yes, you typically look at them in May.
So is there a way we could do something between what Ms. Clapper has said and what I said, to track time spent on these projects, so we can justify a little better the fees we're charging?
Well, I mean, my impression of our process right now is that it's very similar to what Councilmember Clapper described, in terms of the study that's been done to base the fees on, if you will, in terms of interviewing employees and talking about how their time gets divided up. Again, you know, in my impression of this conversation is sort of, we could talk about reallocating, at the end of the day, how fees are divided up, but if some fees are going to go down, it's going to mean that other fees are going to go up, because it's all cost-based. And we know what our cost is. It's a very fixed, easily definable number, and if we're trying to recover those fees and provide the same level of service, it just means that one area of fees may go down, or may be more specific, in that a project may, you know, be better designed than the next project, and require less amount of review and staff time in the process than the next one, whose fees may have to be a lot higher, just given the nature of the project or the overall design and work that needs to be done. And the process that we have in place really sort of streamlines and spreads out those costs in project categories, as opposed to individual, specific projects, where you maybe don't know what you're getting into. You wouldn't be able to tell your client, for example, what the cost might be if we're going on sort of an hourly basis, and a project runs into an issue or something and needs a greater review than the average project. Again, in my mind, unless we're, you know, unless we're talking about subsidizing these types of fees from the general fund, we would really be talking about reducing service. If the fee goes down, there's less available funding to pay for the service, and we would look to reduce staffing or cut costs in some way, lengthen the process perhaps, so that the review time would cost less but would take longer. So I'm not exactly sure what the outcome would be here, if we were to go forward on an hourly, you know, sort of an hourly examination basis, in the process that Councilmember Clapper described, is the process that we've already gone through.
Well, I don't know. I was always under the impression that our fee schedule had to be based on actual studies that were done, so that the applicants paying at least something close to what they're getting in service, and hours spent, and so forth, on projects. That has to be justified. So I guess what I'm still stuck on is, how are we justifying that if we have really no idea how much staff time is being spent?
Well, to the chair, if what the city manager said, I think is, if I'm a designer, and I come in and I want to charge whatever I charge, and I look, and I can sort of guess what my fees are going to be, because I'm a good designer or a bad designer, depending on what I am, my fees could be way high or way low, depending, if you go on a time and time and material basis. You're a good designer.
No, 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 I'm sorry, Mr. Grisilli. I'm not suggesting that we switch to a time and material basis for the fees. What I'm saying is, in order to establish the fees that we do have...
We're taking an average.
We're taking an average, we have to study it, we have to gather data from somewhere in order...
In 2009.
Yeah, in 2009.
We did that, right, yeah.
And that's a long time ago, and it was based on, I mean, that's, what, three years ago, and it was based on data from when they were keeping track of their time, because the consultants that we hired did that.
If these numbers that we had were way off of all the other seven cities, I'd agree with you 1,000% that we need to get NBS out here right now, and let's do it. But they are, to me, except for one item, they're practically identical. So I think we're in the ballpark. And, well, anyway, I think we should just take staff's recommendation that, as the city manager indicated, it's, we have a dollar cost of what our cost is. It's got to be divided somewhere, somehow. This is the way we decided to do it. We can change it all around, just means something else has got to go up if we lower this. It has to. Or we have less service because we have less cost. It's just a simple mathematical equation. So I don't, as long as we're in the range that the staff report says, it looks like it's fine for me, but...
Mr. Olbert. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I generally agree with the comments that Mr. Grisilli made. One question I did have for the city manager, the NBS study that is being alluded to is that very large, resulted in that very large binder that you shared with me, that basically talks about allocating not just these fee-for-service-type arrangements, but basically costs throughout the entire city.
That's correct.
And when is our, when do we, when do staff expect that we would revisit that?
Well, in certain respects, it's revisited every year as part of the fee update. We talk to NBS, we work with them to have the numbers in the book updated and examined, particularly if we have any major changes to the organization, to make sure. Because our goal is to have fees that are legally defensible in case we're challenged in terms of the basis. So it's continually updated. Ms. Mendenhall, I don't think is here this evening, so I don't know if she's got a plan to do a full update in the next several years. I believe that plan cost in excess of $100,000 to prepare, so it's not the type of cost that you would be looking to do just every several years. I believe the fee study that was replaced was nearly 10 years old, when it was replaced in 2009.
My perspective, for what it's worth, having been involved at various companies in implementing or running time management systems, they often provide a fair amount of utility, they're also often quite expensive in terms of operations. I, like Mr. Grisilli, take some comfort from the fact that it appears that we are, there doesn't seem to be anything that's really glaringly different, with that one exception perhaps. And the fact that we do discuss this every year with the consultants that we get the study from, and that we do periodically do the study, although, you know, not as frequently as might be desired in the ideal world, because it's so expensive, I'm reasonably comfortable that what we're doing seems reasonable.
All right, fair enough. I guess I'm going to tell all my architect buddies we should raise our fees, because we should be charging a little bit more on the percentage of cost.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was actually going to suggest that, but I didn't want to be telling you how to run your business.
Except if we do that, then we'll be out of business. But anyways, we'll move on to item...
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a request, and again, when I called you earlier in the week and asked you to move 11B up, at the pace we're going, we're not going to get there until 10:00. And I think we should talk about that before 10:00, because it looks like the rest of it's going to go beyond. So I would ask that we move up 11B to, right now, to be quite honest.
No objection.
Let's see where we are. So right now, we're...
Our next one would be 8C.
Mr. City Manager, how long do you think it'll take us to get through these other items here?
The other items under 8...
C, so you have CI.
C, yeah. C's really one item. It'll be covered in presentation. My, boy, I'd hate to venture a guess, the presentations themselves are relatively short.
They are? Okay. Well, I would say we just, if we might, continue on, if we should get to this other item before 9:00, I would think.
Just for a point of information, I know, not speaking for anybody else, but... Just, just for a point of information, I know, not speaking for anybody else, but I was anticipating having a fairly lengthy discussion about economic development.
You were?
Yes.
Which is?
8C.
8C. All righty.
I would agree. I would hate to see that be truncated too much in order to be able to move to 11B.
All right, so, if it's the council pleasure, then we'll take item 11A right now?
11B.
Or, excuse me, 11B?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that fine?
Fine with me.
All right, let's get on with it then.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Jeff Malp, the city manager. I'll be introducing our Fire Chief, Jim Skinner, in just a moment. I wanted to talk a little bit about the report that's before you tonight. There are, there's one recommendation and several options. The Fire Chief will be giving a presentation on the current staffing situation with the Fire Department and overview of staffing since the department began this last October in 2011. My recommendation before you this evening is that you grant me the authorization to begin discussions with the city manager from Redwood City on what a proposal, what a full-service contract proposal might look like from Redwood City, so that we could bring that information back to the city council at the first available opportunity. Likely will take a month or longer to develop such a proposal. I'm not prepared tonight to say that I would be recommending such a proposal, but I do think it warrants study and information gathering. In the meantime, the department, under our Fire Chief's capable management, will continue to deal with the staffing situation as it evolves. This is an item that's of critical importance to city management, as I'm sure it is of the city council, members of the public, and our fire management staff. Both our Fire Chief and our Deputy Fire Chief, Stan Moppen, who's not here this evening because he's on vacation, well earned vacation, keep me well apprised and up to date of any staffing situations we've had in the department since it's began. They've done a good job in most instances of being able to deal with those staffing situations on the fly. And I'm confident that they're going to be able to piece together some interim solutions to minimize any brownouts that we do have with Station 16. So, with that, I'd like to bring up Chief Skinner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malp. Mayor Brokot, council members, Jim Skinner, your Fire Chief. I wish I was here tonight to give you some better news, but actually, we're at a tipping point in staffing and be able to manage the department the way it is now. As you know, we have two, two engine companies, one Station 13 down on Laurel Street, Station 16 up on the Alameda. Out of both those stations, we have, we run one advanced life support engine company. The requirements for an engine company are one captain, one firefighter, paramedic, and one firefighter at a minimum. Keep in mind that one of those medics or the firefighter have to be able to drive the apparatus and pump the apparatus too, which is a very specialized skill. So, as we are now, we, our minimum staffing to do that is we need six captains, 12 firefighter paramedics, and six firefighters to get fully staffed. Currently, we have 17 fire personnel. Of the 17, we have five captains, six firefighter paramedics, five of which are standalone and can operate within the system of the county and are licensed to do so. One is in the process of being ramped up to be able to run solo, but isn't ready yet, and six firefighters. Keep in mind that only three of the firefighters and paramedic firefighters are driver operators. We require a minimum of six driver operators. When we first went to look at, to help staffing the San Carlos Fire Department with Redwood City personnel, we were in a deficit of paramedics. Right now, we've filled those slots with some of our people, so that's not the criticality of why we had to brown out Station 16 over the last week. The reason we had to do that was because we didn't have drivers. And it's like I said, it's a very specialized piece of equipment, very high risk, and has to be very specially trained. And to do that takes time. And we're, we're in the process of training some of our firefighters and our firefighter paramedics, but we haven't got to the point where they're be able to ride, drive by themselves. So, we're at that point where Redwood City, for instance, just over this last week, we've had, at the end of June, 15 personnel, firefighter personnel retire, which left us with a deficit in our staffing. Before that, we were, we were helping staff San Carlos Fire Department, but right now, we're at the point where it's critical, and that's the only reason why we had to brown out Station 16. And that was a very, very difficult decision for the deputy chief and myself to make. We don't take that decision lightly. We, we look at the statistics and we determine which is the, is the least risky thing to do. But, along with everything else in our business, there are risks. And we don't like doing it, but we're going to, we had to do it over the last week. So, we're deficient, one captain, six firefighter paramedics, and that is why we're where we are today. And we've also gotten to the point where, because we were deficient in some of the firefighter engineer, drivers positions, we used some of our existing fire captains to be drivers on an overtime basis. That is something that, as a Fire Chief, I would never recommend, but there's things that we need to do to keep the stations open and keep the rigs running, and that's one of the things that we did. To put a supervisor into a subordinate role as a driver operator is not something that I like to do, but it's something that we had to do to, and it's one example of some of the things that we're thinking of to make this work. But we're to the point where it will not be able, we will not be able to sustain this at this level. We have to stabilize the organization, and we're looking at how to do that best, with your guidance, of course. Resignations of employees, we had four resignations since we started. Three of those personnel were from the legacy organization, the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. Two of them went to Oakland Fire Department just recently, and one went back to Belmont Fire Department. The other, the other employee that resigned was in the Fire Academy and resigned out of the Fire Academy. That's extremely unusual. In fact, in my 31 years in the fire service, I've never seen that happen before. The loss of those senior employees, it's critical because those senior employees fill the role of firefighter, paramedic, and driver operators also. And now, we're down to three, and we have to fill six spots. Because, as you know, our deployment is, we have those two engine companies running 24-hour shifts, three different shifts, A shift, B shift, and C shift. They work opposite each other. To fill that, you need six of each position every day, I mean, in those, in those positions. But, we don't, we just don't have them. And on an overtime basis, it creates a situation where the employees are working way too many hours. And we're being very, very aware of that, and we're not allowing the employees to work in some situations more than 96 hours in a row, and some 120 hours is just something that we cannot sustain or ask any employee to do. It becomes very risky for the individual, risky for the, for the crew. But I do have to tell you that the personnel that you have in the San Carlos Fire Department are, are the best that I've seen in this situation. They will do everything they can to make this work. And when they go out the door, they do the best job. And we get, as you know, you get the feedback that they're doing wonderful work, and I'm very proud of that, even through all this, when their morale is being, being tested. I got to hand it to, to the men and women of the San Carlos Fire Department for stepping up, keeping their head up, and trying to do the best they can. But we can't sustain this. This can't go on forever. So, who do we hire? We have one lateral firefighter that's coming onboard next week, Monday. But we've had the recruitment for lateral firefighters open for quite a while. We just haven't been able to attract anybody to those positions. And there's many different, different factors involved in why we haven't been able to attract. It's the compensation package that's on, that San Carlos Fire Department has, frankly, and the salary level. And, you know, to go out and hire firefighters that have been laid off from other organizations can be very risky because those individuals tend to bounce around a lot because they're, they're not looking for a home. And what we're looking for in San Carlos and Redwood City, frankly, is people to come and find that their department is, our department is their home, and they'll make it their home, and they'll be part of the community. And that's what we value in these employees. So, that can be very risky. We're looking at hiring six firefighter paramedics for the Fall Academy, which will start in October. We're anticipating. And that, that those firefighters will be in that academy until early January or February. Well, they'll, they'll graduate, and then they'll be online. But to get them through, to be self-sustaining, can take another year on top of that. The probationary period is 18 months. The first 12 months are learning how to be a firefighter, be accredited to be a standalone paramedic, and the last six months of their probation is driver, learning how to drive and being qualified as a driver operator. So, that 18 months from now is when, well, if we had the employees on right today, but we won't until October, that's when the county academy starts. So, the clock is going to be stretched out that much further. So, we're going to be trying to do the best we can to keep this rolling until then, until we get everybody onboard and self-sustaining. The brownouts, let me, let me address that briefly. The first brownout was the end of June, the 30th, and then the 4th of July, the 5th of July, and the 6th of July. Couldn't happen at a worse time of the year, obviously. We were fortunate that nothing catastrophic happened. But as we brown out Station 16, Station 16, well, if that's browned out and there's not a company there, that will impact our neighbors. Station 18, which is, which is county fire, run by CAL FIRE, Station 15 or Belmont, and Station 10 and 12 in Redwood City will be impacted by that. So, it's not just that one company, but it's a, it's a pebble in a pond, if you will, because that company is used to cover other areas of the district if there's other events going on. So, we try to minimize that as best we can. We're trying to be very, very creative, the command staff. I have one member of our command staff, Chief O'Leary here tonight, that they've been working diligently to try and be as creative as they can to make sure they can staff each one of those engine companies, and Redwood City, frankly, on a day-to-day basis. But it's become very, very challenging. And I don't use those words lightly, but we're at a tipping point where, and that's why the options are before you. The city manager has brought for you to make the decision on. So, any questions?
Okay, I'm open for questions. Mr. Collins?
Just a couple, to start with. If we can somehow resolve this, how long do you think it's before, it is before the brownouts are, are resolved?
Well, to permanently resolve the issue, we need a deeper roster, if you will. We need more employees to pull from to fill those slots. And right now, we're just, we're at the point where we only have the 17 in San Carlos, and not all of them are qualified to fill all those spots. I wish I could give you a number. I'm hoping, and I was talking with the deputy this week, last week about it, and we don't think this will be something that will continue on for months and months, maybe a month or two. But until we get other individuals into, into those critical spots that can fill those roles, we won't know.
Okay. And my other question is, with that brownout, how are response times impacted?
The, well, as, as we found in Redwood City, when we browned out our, our downtown engine, the response times will increase. At what level, because of the geographic location of Station 16 in the district, I can't say. But my instinct are, in our study, is that it, they will increase. To what level, I really can't say until we see more data and look at where we are.
That's all I have for now. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief Skinner. And by the way, thank you very much for being direct about this, and I, I think you're absolutely right that it is, in one sense, not welcome news, but I, for one, have always believed that it's best to know, it's best to keep your eye on the knife. So, please don't ever hesitate from telling us whatever we need to hear.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
My question actually, I actually have two. My sense is, knowing absolutely nothing about the care and feeding of fire departments, is that the situation you're describing, there's probably the need for both a, what I'll call a short-term response and a longer-term response. And I'm thinking here, the longer-term response is, for example, a full-blown merger.
Correct.
But with all the best intentions in the world, that's not going to happen, like, by next week.
No.
Or next month.
I wish I could snap my finger, yeah, but no.
Right. So, I'm sure this is something you've been thinking about. Are there steps that we need to be taking in the short term while we talk about, or while we give guidance to staff about what the long-term direction is?
I, I think if we, we got staff to sit down and think about what the issue is, and I, I hope I described that the issue was, that we don't have a deep roster. If we could come to some agreement between Redwood City and San Carlos where we would share employees, cross-staff employees more than just one position at a time in an overtime capacity, but on a day-to-day basis, to fill these roles, then we could get through the next few months while we're crafting a, a bigger contract.
Oh, I see. So, in a sense, the short-term solution might be a simplified version of the longer-term solution, or at least one element of it?
Correct, correct. And, and for example, there was, there was one or two days recently where we could have moved a firefighter from San Carlos into Redwood City to help us staff one of our engines that was deficient. So, we could have helped each other in that situation, but there's no mechanism to do that right now.
Okay. My second question is looking a little bit down the road towards discussions about, about doing a full-blown merger. One of the thoughts, one of the issues I always have in my mind about that, and I'll preface this by saying that, that do not take this at all wrong, but there's an issue that sometimes can arise, or can arise, thinking about, okay, well, let's say we do talk about doing a full-blown merger. How do we in San Carlos know that in the scheme of things, that the San Carlos issues and staff and whatnot gets treated sort of equitably, because we'd be sort of the smaller player within the, within the scope of what you're talking about? I'm sure this is also something you've thought about, and I'd just be interested in your thoughts.
You know, that's a great, great question, and I just have to go back with history. We have a collaborative history with San Carlos and South County Fire and Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. We, we shared personnel in the past. We've, you know, our training chief, our EMS chief, served all three of us. We have a relationship that I think is built on trust. And I think that, hopefully, that you've seen that since October, when we've, we've come together, become partners. And it's built on the trust of, frankly, myself and the command staff, that we will treat the San Carlos Fire Department as a Redwood City Fire Department. I, I feel like we can do that. We can, hopefully, you could trust us to do that. The loss of identity will not happen. Retain the San Carlos Fire Department even through this is important to me, and I know that it's, that it's important to you and the community to have that identity and not ever lose that.
Thank you.
Mr. Grisilli?
Not at this point, no. I wanted to hear what the rest of you had to say.
Chief, how many employees before the 15 left in Redwood City? How many employees did you have?
We had 59.
So, basically-
On suppression.
So, so, say 60 people, because I'm, it's easy math, you lost 25% of your people.
Correct.
So, assuming you weren't even dealing with San Carlos, it would seem to me you've got the same, to some extent, you have the same issue in your town.
Well, the only thing that's, that's helping us in the same situation is we have five pieces of equipment that we fill, so we have a larger workforce to draw from for, to fill-
Yeah, sort of less equipment and more bodies, so to speak.
Correct.
You have the economy scale, let's say, that we, that we don't have.
Correct. Right. With two, with two stations, it's, I mean, it's, it's very difficult.
I understand. And again, I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, I sort of wanted to, and I knew this was a story, is you've got, you've got moving parts on both sides. I mean, if I lost 25% of my staff, I don't care what it is, that's huge. And, you know, you've got to, you've got to balance out that safety issues, and I'm sure you're talking to your council directly about some of this too. So, we're not the only ones in this.
No.
It just makes it a little more complicated. I appreciate, again, your candor, as was mentioned before, and like I said, I don't have any more questions because, having done this for a while now, I understand this 24- 24/7 and how it has to work. So I appreciate you telling us what we have to know and what we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Clapper?
No, thank you very much for your presentation, but I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you.
I have a few, I'll start it this way. If you had today, all of our employees combined with your employees that you have right now, what would be the ability to staff all the stations that would come under that umbrella then, being our, our two stations?
The current, well, we'd still be deficient. We'd still be short. At the current level, is that, is your question?
Yeah, if you, if you had your current level of employees, and then you had our current level of employees, and they were just all one fire department, one team, what kind of deficiency would you have? And I suppose I, what I'm looking for is especially regards browning out any stations or equipment.
We, we would not have enough FTEs to fill every slot every day without utilizing overtime. So with utilizing overtime, we'd be able to fill all those spots. We would be deficient, and I'm, this is off the top of my head, probably five or six people at this point right now. If we combined.
So does that, now, over here on this side of the border, being San Carlos, we're in a pressure cooker situation. I mean, we're asking these guys to work overtime far and above what they would want to, and we're getting, I think, well, the reason you're browning out stations, I would assume, is because at some point you get into a, a rather dangerous situation for your employees. They're, they're so ragged that, right?
Correct.
So if, if you had the two poles of employees together in one department, you'd be utilizing overtime but not to the ragged edge, is that?
Correct. And, and the other thing to keep in mind, it's not just the, not just the, the numbers, it, it's the firefighters that have the specialties to build, to fill those spots.
Right, I understand.
We'd have more drivers, more paramedics that would be available to fill those spots also.
Okay. Now, are you in the same situation with Redwood City in terms of hiring and going through the academy and the timeframe? It's the same timeframe?
Correct, absolutely. The same exact timeframe.
All right. And then this mechanism you talked about, you know, to cross-staff, how long might that take?
It would be a discussion between the two managers and the unions to sit down and have a short-term agreement to get through this crisis. And I'm cautiously optimistic that we could do that in a relatively short timeframe. Within a month or a month, a month and a half.
Okay, so that would, what I'm seeing by my questions there is that we could relieve this situation, the pressure cooker that we're in, the ragged edge that we're, we're dealing with, in at least a couple of months, possibly.
Possibly, yeah.
Right. And we still have, like, we're hiring the one lateral?
Correct.
So forth.
And we're still, we haven't stopped our diligence to try and staff the organization, and that, your point is well-taken. So we're, we haven't moved off of any of that.
And, and if we had this mechanism in place, it might look a little bit more attractive to do some lateral hiring, is that correct?
It could, yes.
It could, okay. So that can help us out in a number of ways.
Yes.
Right?
Keep in mind, the, even to ramp up the lateral firefighter, paramedic, well.
To your department, it takes.
Your department takes six months, at least.
Yeah, it takes some training there too as well. One thing you didn't hit on, Chief, when you were talking to us, is any, can you give us some background on the discussions you've had so far with your city manager or your city council?
We've talked to the city council briefly, had a discussion with the mayor, and they're very excited about expanding the relationship with San Carlos. The city manager is totally onboard with, with the direction that we're hopefully heading. And wants to make this work and wants to help.
Okay. All right, those are all my questions, I appreciate it. We've got a few, some other questions here. Go ahead.
I just, I just have one more, Chief. I was thinking about, I think Mayor Grocott touched on it a little bit. If we're able to do this full-service model, what kind of impact does that have on recruitment? Does it in fact make recruitment easier?
I, my sense is it would make it a lot easier.
Yes.
Because it would be, a larger organization is more attractive. Firefighters tend to want to work in a, in an organization where they have options of a variety of work assignments. San Carlos doesn't have that variety, they have two engine companies and that's it. Not that Redwood City has a vast amount of specialty assignments, but we do have the truck, which is a specialty assignment. We have Station 11, which has, will have a fireboat within the next six months. We have Station 12 up in the hills that has a patrol, a wildland patrol. So there are other options or other areas for firefighters to, to challenge themselves.
All right. And then I just had one other, I think, I thought this is where Mayor Grocott was going with this, this line of questioning with, you have a deficit now with 15 firefighters retiring, like Mr. Griselli said, about 25%. We're short about, what is it, six here?
Right.
So that's a total of 21. With a, with a single model merged fire department, is the deficit still 21, or is it somewhat less than 21?
Well, just to, to correct you, in Redwood City, we've already hired 60, excuse me, six firefighters.
Okay.
To fill some of those roles. So we already got them through the last academy in anticipation of our retirements. So.
So your deficit's nine?
Our deficit right now, well, for the Fall, it's nine right now.
Okay.
And then we'll have nine, we're looking at three lateral firefighters right now, firefighter paramedics, and then six for the Fall Academy. So that's nine, correct.
Okay.
Right.
So then the overall deficit is 15?
Fifteen, correct.
And does the merged department then, is it, is it still the same 15?
It will, well, it still will be, but the benefit of San Carlos model is that we have the ability of 24 FTEs, which means that we have one, not extra body on each of the engine companies, to fill for the, for relief spots. So we will have those FTEs to fill on a rotational basis, as, as well as in Redwood City. We will, when we're fully staffed, we'll have some relief people also, which is a healthy way to run an organization.
Okay, so it gives you both, like you say, a deeper bench, and it gives you flexibility.
Exactly, correct, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Clapper?
I, I do have a question that I thought of. When you're looking, what, looking at the profile of the current staff, how many of those are likely to be retiring in, in the next couple of years?
With this, I anticipate within five years, we will probably lose maybe three or four employees from San Carlos. And those are, those members are, are from the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department that came on.
Okay, but I'm talking about the.
Overall.
If we look at overall, if we were to, to look at the.
Well, let me give you a historical perspective. 31 years ago, when Indian Chief O'Leary and myself came into Redwood City, there was a deficit. 30 years later, with the retirement system the way it is, 30 years, they're gone. So we're, in, in other words, we're in good shape for 30 years without having this mass exodus. Because the firefighters that we're hiring, they're relatively new to the, to the, to the service, so they won't be retiring any, any near soon, any day soon. So the, the retirement rate that we've seen historically has been one or two every three or four years. And that's, that's average. This is extremely unusual, and that's why, you know, this is, this is, we're at a tipping point. Because these, all these things lined up at this moment to, to make this happen. So it's very unusual.
Thank you.
I had a couple more questions. You've mentioned about the criticalness of the driver operator. What about the fellow that does the, I don't know what you call it, but the, the guy that reads the map and, you know?
Or the captain? Or the, well, there's the, the firefighter, the driver operator, the captain and the firefighter paramedic.
Okay, so who's helping the driver? Because I, you know, I just, from a little experience in doing a ride-around, I remember there's a fellow who's reading the map, telling him, yeah, this street, you want to turn here?
That's typical.
And watching out also for, are the cars stopping because of our siren, or is this guy going through the intersection?
Typically, the captain now will do that role now.
The captain, okay, all right.
Yes, right. So that, those are the, those are the critical positions that we have.
Right.
The, the captain, because you, you know, either.
There's one short on that, too.
One's short on the captain, and then the firefighter paramedics. Because a firefighter, if it's just a firefighter, not with the, not, doesn't have the paramedic license, can't fill that role as a paramedic. Can't be an actor into that role. But we can have firefighters or firefighter paramedics for that matter as acting captains. Right now, we don't have any in San Carlos, but we do have a handful in Redwood City. So that's, that's, but when we get into driver operator, if you're not, not certified and not licensed or checked off, you just cannot fill that role. So that's, that's why we're, where we are.
And on the brownouts chief, that's for a full 24-hour period, or it's?
That's, yes, unless we can do something different, but it's been 24 hours at a time.
Wow. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, so let's have a discussion on this then. I don't have any speaker cards on this.
Well, I'll, I'll jump in. I think that, I think that I'm very supportive of the idea of asking Mr. Maltby to pursue what he offered as his recommendation, to look at doing a full-blown merger between Redwood City and San Carlos. That is actually, in, as I understand it, in many respects, the ultimate destination that we, was one of the ultimate destinations that we were thinking about, because years ago, or last year or so ago, when the council started going down this path. Because the regionalization of providing fire services has a lot of, there's a lot of sense behind that. There's a lot of rational reasons for doing it. So I think it's something that, it's time to do it. In an ideal world, I'd love it if we could be doing it not under a gun, but, you know, you play the hand that you're dealt, and I think this is one of those times when that's what we ought to be doing.
I would like to, to see three things happening.
One, that, that the staff is taking a look at what this short-term solution is, to make sure that the current problem is, work around is developed as quickly as possible. And then secondly, looking at the, the full-service fire model with Redwood City. But I, I would like to, and part of this may be because I'm newer to the council, and maybe I just need to go back and watch all the videos of the past meetings, but I would like some information about comparisons to that full-service model with Redwood City. What are some of the other possible options, although we're not, we may not be looking at those in depth. I would just like to, to have some kind of conceptual idea of what other alternatives might be in addition to doing a full-service model with Redwood City, so.
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Well, I, you know, are there, what are other options for us in terms of our fire coverage?
Do you mean?
You know, if we, yeah. You know, we're already invested in what we're doing right now as a hybrid. We're looking at going to a full-service model with Redwood City. Is there anyone else out there we could, that we could do a full-service model with?
You know, I think your statement through the chair, I think your statement earlier is probably the very, very right on where you said, because you're, and I'm not.
Right, and that's why I'm saying, I, you know, so it's.
I'm not trying to denigrate that question because it's an excellent question, but I, and I think staff could, could easily give you that information.
Okay, that's.
As opposed to all of us, because some of it is, we've beaten this horse to death a thousand times.
Yeah, and I, I don't want, I don't want us to go back through that, so I appreciate your suggestion.
No, no, there are some other information that staff can give you, where we're, we're pretty much, we're sort of locked in in a lot of ways.
Right.
And so, but I think that information would be great for you.
That third item will be on my personal agenda.
Okay, well, I just, I just mentioned that only because we've, we've sort of beaten that a bit.
That's, that's fine, thank you.
And through the chair, if I may add, I would be happy to, I'm not that much more experienced than the council than you are, Karen, so I'd be happy to share what I've learned too, if you're, on the subject, if you're interested.
Thank you. I will follow up with you on that.
Was there, so you had three items, did you go through all three then? I lost track.
Yes, because the third one has been whisked away.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Well.
You're just such a whisker. You're just such a whisker.
It's in a positive sense.
Okay.
It was taken care of.
Yes. Thank you all for helping.
Well, I haven't been on the council that long either, but I've hung around this town long enough that I've seen out all the, all of the things that have developed over the last few years, and, and always trying to keep in mind that my job here is, is a, I'm really an employee of the residents of this city. I think we owe it to our citizens in, over the long term, to look at what are the best options available to the city. But what drives me to wanting to authorize the city manager to, you know, continue discussions with Redwood City right now, is really, in, in my case, it comes down to one simple thing. And that is what Chief Skinner mentioned before, is trust. I trust the city manager, I trust the people of Redwood City, I trust the fire chief to do what is necessary, what they think is right. We've all been down this, this road before, and it's keenly on everyone's mind. So if, if they think that they can come up with a model that, that works, then I want to see it. And I think we, we owe it to them, we owe it to the people of the city, to see how well, how well we can solve this, this issue. We will always have other options, but again, I, I trust these individuals to come up with, with a, with a model that, that works. They know this intimately and infinitely better than I do. So that's all I want to say, is I, I support going forward with authorizing Mr. Maltby and Redwood City city manager, whose name escapes me, Bob.
Bob Bell.
Yeah, Bob Bell, to, and Chief Skinner, to put together a program that, that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Mr. Griselli?
I echo fellow council members to authorize the city manager to talk to the city of Redwood City, and I'm, I'm encouraged by the fact that the, the chief has talked to Mayor Aguirre, and she is, she's onboard. And again, as, as Councilmember Collins said, I'm working with some of the folks in Redwood City as I have over the last six and a half years. I have that same trust that they, in almost every case, want to do the right thing for everybody, not just, not just themselves. And I think it would, we're fortunate to have the folks in Redwood City as semi-partners now, and perhaps even bigger partners in, in the future. So I, I think we should go forward with the discussions.
All right, I'm, I'm going to ask for some clarification, then it sounds like we're looking at item one, and the city attorney might help me if, on this a little bit. There was discussion, when the chief was giving his presentation, he mentioned about a mechanism to cross-staff, and that could be discussed earlier. The statement here, item one, as an alternative, doesn't go into that kind of detail? So if that's what we're looking for, is to work on a cross-staffing agreement first, can we, can we do that by consensus? And then actually vote on item one? Help me out here.
Well, item, item one is a fairly all-encompassing.
It's fairly broad.
Broad, broad charge. It includes begin discussions for expanding fire service. I think that would include the, the interim issues that you're talking about, or that were up for discussion tonight. Also, in my experience, there's been ongoing negotiations, fine-tuning the contracts already, and the final decision is always yours that we bring forward in a, on a noticed agenda. So if there's something that's more specific, we would bring that forward.
Right, but is, so is it fair right now, if we just, none of the council members mentioned it in their comments, I'm, that's what I'm looking for, is a little detail from the council, are they in favor of us looking at first cross-staffing with the goal down the road, further?
That was actually my number one part of what, my now two-part point, was that, yes, that I did want to see something on a short-term basis. And it may be that that is the transition plan for moving into that full-service model, so I can understand what Mr. Rubens is saying, that, that interim solution would be part of what number one is.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I was going to make this point just in general comments when we got, before we closed out this item, but part of the reason I was asking Chief Skinner about the short-term versus long-term thing, was thinking exactly along those lines as well. And that I would, my support of the first alternative here, and what I view, authorizing Mr. Maltby to enter into these more.
Mr. Malpigh to enter into these more, discussions about a more extensive relationship, that too has both short-term and long-term implications, and I would strongly encourage him to, you know, work with the appropriate resources to figure out what we do in the short term as well as the long term.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear as we go forward. Well, the only, I, I just have a comment on this, it's not really a discussion item, but going through this really hurts, because in my, you know, I've been on the council a long time and, and did a lot of work on fire since 2005 especially, and to be going through this and knowing that our community is suffering this pains me greatly, that we have to go through this again. That said, Chief Skinner and your, your deputy chief, Mopin, and all your firefighters, really, the way you've supported this community, the work you've done, and you've gone, you know, the extra mile many times over, and it's much appreciated. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may. First off, just a, I, I agree actually very much with the sentiment that you just expressed, even though, of course, I wasn't here until last December. I do think it's worth remembering that whenever an organization undergoes a very significant shift in its sort of business model, at least every experience I've ever had like that, it, it is rare that you land on the answer, the precise answer that you want the first time. There's always, there's always mid-course corrections that you have to make, sometimes larger than others. And I don't mean to minimize the problem at all that we're facing, that's why I was saying I strongly urge Mr. Malpigh to be looking at, and I know he will, both the short-term and the long-term answer. I also think that, I was going to make sort of two, two comments. One is that it would, I'd like to express my personal hope that, as the discussions unfold, that we find a way to express this type of support and trust that we've all cited here, at the level of where the agreement comes together in terms of how the two staffs get integrated, assuming we go down that road. Because my study of the issue leads me to believe that oftentimes integrating the two labor forces together can be one of the more challenging aspects of, of doing these kinds of things. And I hope that we can find a way, and I personally want to say that if there's anything I can do to help lobbying people and talking to people about getting them to see that, you know, of how we're trying to do that, to, to give everybody an equal footing in a new organization, an expanded organization, I would love to see that happen. And the other comment I was going to make is, I'm going to say this just for myself, because you only ever speak for yourself, but I, I suspect that the rest of my colleagues up here, following on with the mayor just said, I want to also thank all the folks, not only in Redwood City, but the ones in the San Carlos Fire Department. I, I can only imagine how difficult it is, all the hours and time that's being put in there, and the, the increased personal risk that they're taking on behalf of the community, and I just want them to know that, that we know that, I know that, and we appreciate it, so.
You have one last comment? Okay, I do two, so I'll let you go first.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you. And I echo all of Mr. Olbert's comments. Well, one thing that just occurred to me, because my, my learning curve on this has been quite steep, and I've had to, I've had to been brought up to speed very, very quickly, because, you know, we didn't anticipate this, but like Mr. Olbert says, you know, when you do something new, there's always going to be bumps in the road, and you have to make mid-course corrections, you have to, you have to make changes as you go, but I, I want to extend my thanks to Brian Moore for spending probably the better part of two hours on the phone with me, answering all of my ridiculous questions. I have a, a much clearer picture of the challenge and all of the issues at, at hand from talking with him, and, and I appreciate your, your years of experience and your depth of knowledge on this, and, and making it very clear to me what our options are and all the pros and cons of every, of every side of the issue. So thank you.
All right. My, my last comment is this, the rest of the council doesn't know this necessarily, but I did meet with the chief and deputy Mopin and, on this issue, and then I did meet with the city manager, and at the time, I was talking about it would be nice to use this as a jumping-off point to look at a larger regional model. But after hearing tonight the chief's presentation, I think really the thing that we need to focus on is fixing the problem right now. And if that is a good model, the full-service model, then when we have something that's attractive and a good running machine, then I think it's a time to talk about expanding to the regional model. I, as I've told you, Mr. Malpigh, you know, I would love nothing more than to see expansion to a regional model, and, you know, some type of county-wide, or even a south county or whatever. I, I think that's the real answer, but right now, the real answer is fix this problem, and, and then we can move forward from there and start talking about bigger things. So all the things I've talked to you about, about having a council subcommittee, looking at, you know, how we put together a regional, I think that's on the back burner right now. Okay, we need a motion and so forth to carry this forward.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept staff's recommendation to authorize the city manager to begin broader discussions with Redwood City, to expand the fire service relationship that we currently enjoy with Redwood City, and, just to be clear, based on our earlier discussion, to also focus on addressing the near-term issues as well.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Okay, we've had a motion, we've had a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Klepper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Heck, yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, again, I just wanted to thank you for moving this up on the agenda. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that brings us to item C, I believe, which is consideration of economic development plan progress report and IDing priorities for the fiscal year 12-13.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor. I'm be introducing our economic development and housing manager, Mark Swicki, to come up and make a presentation along with one of the members from EDAC, to give you an update on the progress report on the current economic development plan that is underway for fiscal year 2012-2013. Economic development is one of those activities that, from time to time, gets a lot of discussion from the council, and rightly so. It's not something that you hear about too often from the average community member, you hear more about it from the business community than you hear about it from, from the residential community, but it is a critical, oh, excuse me, critical component of how we go about funding the services that we provide the entire community. I think San Carlos, we offer some wonderful services and amenities to the community. Our Parks and Recreation Department is second to none. We have high-quality police services, we're standing up our own fire department. These, these services are extremely expensive, particularly when you are living at the heart of an extremely expensive region. And economic development in this community has been a priority that goes back 30, 40, 50, 60, 70 years, when you look at the record. It's something that city councils have concerned them, themselves with. I think when you look at and understand the economic engine that is San Carlos and what makes it different, you, you understand that a lot of thought and a lot of work went into creating this community from a business standpoint over many decades. A great deal of that effort has been worked through and accomplished through redevelopment in San Carlos, going back the last 20 years. Some of the, the very major economic activities that have happened have involved the Redevelopment Agency. And earlier this year, redevelopment, as we know it in California, was ended by the state legislature, and cities are being forced to look at new ways to provide economic development, to plan for economic development in their communities. I wish I could say that I'm standing before you this evening with all the answers, I'm not. I am standing before you knowing that we need to begin to develop a, a new type of plan to bring those answers, so that we can continue to be innovative, that we continue to be proactive and not reactive. I think this city, the city, this city council and the city council before it, did a tremendous amount of work to balance the city's budget, to ensure that we had a stable economic environment in this community, and I think the council's done a great job at that, and it's put us in a unique position of being a little bit ahead of the curve right now than some other organizations, some other municipalities within the region, that are still reacting to a very difficult financial situation, some very difficult changes that they're facing in terms of organizational structure and service delivery models. We, on the other hand, have the opportunity right now to begin to plan on how we are going to address the future of economic development to this community. All the properties in San Carlos, the residential properties, the commercial properties, combined to pay approximately eight and a half, nine million dollars in property tax, which is our single-largest source of revenue to fund city services. That's a lot of money. It's, it, it's a very stable revenue source. Sales tax, on the other hand, can be a very volatile revenue source. It can be unpredictable. We generate approximately four and a half million dollars a year in sales tax, our second-largest revenue source that we fund our city services with. And one of the reasons that we've seen our sales taxes remain relatively stable compared to some other cities, not only in this county, but throughout the Bay Area, is because our economic development strategy in the past has been a very diversified one. We've got a great deal of different types of businesses and business categories functioning throughout the city. And some of them are large, some of them are very small, some of them are small categories, like our downtown, which has lots of different types of small businesses. They don't add up to be, in any way, shape, or form, the majority of the sales tax we generate, but they are one small component, and one component that helps diversify the portfolio, if you will. Diversification certainly helps protect any portfolio from the ups and downs that come from the marketplace. And our diversified business portfolio has provided a very stable economic environment for the city, even in one of the most difficult economic times in California history. So that's a little bit of background, a little bit of my two cents in terms of setting up economic development before we bring up Mr. Swicki to give his more specific report. I think economic development and the activities in economic development, the planning and the thought that will be done by this city council and this city staff are going to be critical over the next couple of years here in defining probably the next 30 years financially for this city, as well as the overall business and economic climate for our residents and business owners. So with that, I'm going to bring up Mr. Swicki. Thanks.
and housing manager. This presentation will include a recap of the city's original 2007 economic development plan and the action steps in the current economic development plan for 2010 to 2013, the progress we have made, including some key financial measures. I'll then provide some context and take you through a process that staff and EDAC undertook to revisit our economic development plan and reset our priorities going forward, given the constraints we have to work with in a post-redevelopment world. I'll try to move quickly, but please let me know if you have questions of clarification along the way. Bob Farkas, the chair of EDAC, is also with us tonight and is available for your, for your questions. As we begin a discussion on economic development, I always find it helpful to pause and define what it is we're talking about. Economic development can mean many things to different people, probably because it encompasses many different goals, strategies, and tools. What I find most compelling in this Wikipedia definition is that economic development involves action that is both concerted and sustained. That implies to me that real economic development just doesn't happen on its own, but that you need to stick consistently to a strategy over a long period of time in order to see the results. Back in 2007, the city established an economic development plan after a community-wide discussion and review by the EDAC and a study session with council. This document set 21 objectives to achieve over the next three years, and the council set the following as their five priorities. We've had success getting Bianchini's in at the Bell Market site, that was the, the number-one priority. The Transit Village and the Wheeler Plaza development have seen significant progress, and they continue to move forward, but market constraints have made it difficult to pursue the last two priorities. In 2010, council adopted a new three-year economic development plan prepared by staff and EDAC. This plan presented a comprehensive roadmap of 21 action steps, organized in a recurring loop of strategic planning and analysis that would inform implementation, followed by evaluation of those actions and outcomes to inform the ongoing strategy. On the planning and analysis side, we've made progress in some areas, and with the recent loss of RDA funding, have added some other actions to identify alternative tools and resources to support economic development. Progress on implementation actions has been hampered by both the loss of the RDA funding and the diversion of staff time and focus with the dissolution process, all the time that it's demanded. The passage of AB 1484 recently is only going to continue to distract our energy and focus for the near future, unfortunately. Staff continues to try to make connections between brokers, property owners, developers, and businesses looking to expand or move to San Carlos. As our efforts grow more targeted on particular spaces and sites and businesses we seek to attract, we will begin to prepare customized recruitment packages, in effect using a rifle rather than a shotgun approach. To the extent the Transit Village and Wheeler Plaza developments move forward, they could have significant economic impacts. They've got their own mixed trajectories that we have adjusted to and continue to readjust to. Market forces are again making a landmark site, a potential opportunity for developers, for hotel and office. And the El Camino remains the toughest to have any impact on, although we do have streetscape improvements planned, and if the Transit Village and the Wheeler Plaza project go forward, they're going to be a, a real catalyst for more transit-oriented development, either residential or office. This report and frequent updates at the EDAC level form the basis of ongoing evaluation. I can provide some metrics on the next couple of slides. And the recent citizen satisfaction survey has provided some useful input, although it would also be helpful to design a, a survey for our businesses to, to, to find out how we're doing from their perspective as well. In 2008, in the review of the economic development plan, a set of metrics were established to evaluate progress. The first was to see if San Carlos could increase its sales tax receipts at a rate that is 1% greater than the county-wide growth rate. We were successful only in the first year on an annual basis. Over the last four years, however, on a cumulative basis, we are doing better than the county. That is because we did not have the, the significant dip that the county had. We don't have auto malls, we don't have big shopping centers. That's what took the, the, the brunt of the, of the economic collapse. So we've, we've written that out, and we actually are in a, in a position on sales tax, which is higher than, than, than the base year of, of 2010, and the county is still behind, county-wide is still behind. The other goal is property value, assessed value, and again, we wanted to exceed the county by 1%. We succeeded in two of the last four years, but again, on a cumulative basis, we are ahead of the, of the county-wide growth rate. We've seen downturns in property value as the housing markets collapsed, but San Carlos was fairly well insulated from what everybody else saw, and continues to see very strong demand. The third measure of, of hotel tax, TOT, we were never able to spark development of the hotel and landmark sites, so it would be hard to have met this goal, but we do see that hotel rates and occupancy rates are rising again. Not only does that help us with the, with the, with the revenue collection, but it bodes well for a potential attracting development of a hotel on that landmark site. In 2010, when the 2010 plan was adopted, another goal was added. At that time, the city was facing a three-and-a-half-million-dollar deficit, and the question was raised, rather than raise taxes or cut services and staff, what kind of growth from economic development would be necessary to make up a $3.5-million shortfall, and in what timeframe? We had a stretch goal of $3.8 million by 2012, that would have added 3% inflation, or a target goal by 2015 of, of $4 million. Since 2010, these, these sources of revenue have risen by $1.5 million, that's an annual rate of 5.5%. If we continue at 5.3% growth rate annually, we can actually meet that target by 2010. If we continue at 5.3% growth rate annually, we can actually meet that target by 2015. It is doable. It's not doable by next year, but it is doable by 2015. It's an interesting metric to view our progress against. I'd like to shift gears now towards where we stand currently, where we'd like to focus moving forward. If you add up sales tax and property tax just from the commercial part of our base, not the residential, and the hotel tax revenues, it measures about 35% of total city revenues. This is the piece of the fiscal pie that we would like to grow with our economic development efforts. Our budget for the Economic Development Division this year is about $330,000. That's roughly 1.2% of total expenditures. It's also roughly 3.8% of that fiscal pie. In my mind, if we can grow our revenues by $350,000 or more, we're getting a good return on our investment in economic development. Given the loss of the RDA, both staff and EDAC have set out about to revisit the economic development plan and see where we should concentrate our sustained and concerted actions to be most effective with our limited resources. The balance of this presentation reflects discussions with EDAC and our mutual recommendations. I would like to give credit to the Economic Development Commissioner Cameron Johnson, who prepared a lot of these slides to help frame the discussion at the EDAC level and to help us make these recommendations. Our goals are pretty clear, and they remain consistent. Increasing economic activity is going to increase sales and property taxes. It's also going to improve the quality of life and improve the economic opportunities for our residents. At a high level, we need to retain and grow existing productive businesses. We should also be on the lookout for putting our best face forward for new businesses that are looking to move or grow. For existing businesses, we want to be knowledgeable about their needs and plans and be preventive where we can if we think they may leave or shut down. We want to promote them and encourage their expansion. For new businesses, recruiting, we have to understand recruiting involves not just identifying prospects, but identifying where they would go and making sure that there are the right opportunities for them. That could mean helping to create new space, as well as providing incubator-type space for growing our own. What is the right strategy? Well, we want to focus on those strategies and activities that yield the biggest return on our efforts in a timeframe where we can see results. Why can't we do everything? Well, we have a very ambitious and comprehensive economic development plan as it is. We can't spread our few resources over all of the actions included in the plan. If we want to see results, we need to be focused on the few things that we can do with the resources that we have that will yield returns.
The EDAC, and specifically led by Cameron Johnson, put together these graphs, these figures, to kind of focus the thinking around, well, of all the things that we can do, what are the things that are going to have the highest impact based on the effort and resources? The upper-right corner of recruiting is pretty much the target in this frame of reference, high impact with low resources, as opposed to focusing on startups, which may have a low impact but take high resources. And this was meant for discussion. It's not meant to be the Bible or any specific economic strain of thought that has been researched. It was really, we talked about what belongs in what box. And there were some differences of opinion, but this is kind of where we all came to between staff and EDAC. Another way of looking at it was return on investment compared to time to results. Again, recruiting and promoting were the things that seemed to rise to the top as we reviewed these. So the conclusion was that the top three strategies should be recruitment, development, and targeted promotion, but that the initial priority should be outreach, because outreach will support and inform who we recruit, what should be developed, and how to target our promotion. All the other activities in the plan should be limited, so that efforts stay focused on these top three ideas. By outreach, outreach, it's a critical piece. Not only does it go a long way towards retention, it could be the best source of finding recruitment targets, particularly among the business-to-business sector versus the retail and restaurant We would like to form an ambassador team that would include the mayor or another council member, the city manager, maybe a member of EDAC, maybe a member of the chamber, visit with our existing businesses, choose which ones we want to visit and what order. By doing so, we can gather valuable information. This is actually one of the best sources for recruitment. You find out who their suppliers are, who their customers are, and whether they would be a good fit to co-locate in San Carlos. They may already be looking. They may already have knowledge of these other businesses, rather than just cold-calling. It's a great way to do recruitment with what you have already. It also helps you anticipate vacancies, anticipate whether they may be losing, consolidating, or wanting to expand. You'll also get good information about what processes are working and perhaps how we can co-promote. On the recruitment side, again, it requires having the kind of space that your target is interested in. If we want certain businesses, we have to make the case for them to come here. We need to match what they need. If we don't have a space that meets their need, we have to think about if and how we can create it. We want to look at how we can add value to what brokers and developers are already doing. We don't want to be the broker. What we want to do is assist, focus them. It's a, you know, I also have a slide that I can show you of our current vacancy rates. We actually have a 4% vacancy rate in industrial space. We have a 2% retail vacancy rate. So it's not like we're looking for spaces to fill. We have to create the spaces, or we have to be ready and flexible when someone goes out that someone else can go in that we want. But the market is actually doing a fairly good job. What we have a big excess of is office space and R&amp;D space right now, but we have a limited supply of that, so any one tenant could easily fill that void. I also like to think about this as economic gardening, which is a term of art that you hear in economic development circles. That includes tilling, planting, fertilizing, but in my mind, it also means pulling out weeds, looking for where you have businesses or properties that aren't doing anything for the community. There's no jobs there. There's no fiscal returns there. There's no sales tax coming out of them. That's where you might want to target moving somebody into and talking to that property owner or developers to make that happen. On the development side, again, be remiss to say that there are very large economic impacts that can come from major developments like the Transit Village and Wheeler Plaza, but even more especially a hotel and office development over on the east side. It's a long and complicated process, but it's a very high return, so it's something that we need to make continued progress and remain a high priority. On the promotion side, our branding and marketing strategy had envisioned doing some targeted promotion, not necessarily just broadcasting, hey, we're San Carlos, but saying, we have a large building and materials sector. Here's a brochure on all our businesses. Here's an event that's going to highlight all of those businesses. Or maybe there's an ad that features those businesses. We could also do this similar thing for our great restaurants. We also have a pretty good mix of sporting goods businesses. That's another thing that we could be promoting. And of course, with limited resources, we're going to want to continue to measure if we're getting the results for our efforts. This list provides, in addition to just sales tax revenue, some other ways that we can measure our effects. Lastly, going back to the existing economic development plan, these are the priorities that both I and EDAC are recommending the council set as our immediate priorities, something that we can all get behind and at least for the next year, if not beyond. We can move those up and down. It was pretty much where we landed, given the discussions that we had. And again, the idea is to focus on a smaller number of activities for our energies, rather than trying to do everything which we can't do. We should do the things that will give us the highest return for our effort. I'm available for your questions, and I look forward to your feedback and input.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Questions from council? I see people moving papers around, but Mr. Albert looks ready.
Thank you, Mr. Suwicky. Thank you, Mr. Malpe, for the introduction as well. A bunch of things I want to discuss when we get to council discussion, but just in terms of questions right now, Mr. Suwicky. What role do you see and have we, and what role have we interacted with property developers with when we think about economic development? I was thinking about your point about creating space and whatnot. I mean, given that our coffers are not filled with money that we can use to acquire property ourselves, and there is no more redevelopment agency, things like property consolidation and whatnot are going to happen on somebody else's dime. And so do we interact with those somebody elses, and how do they factor into the recruiting and discussion efforts that you were talking about?
A lot of it is just pointing them in the right direction, showing them where things are, you know, we have a new general plan and zoning code. It's very important to let the development community know about that and let brokers know about that, what can be done, what's achievable. A lot of times, they, you know, brokers, developers, they're covering a lot of territory, so the more that you can give them information focused on just San Carlos, that may deliver what they're looking for. It's always helpful. Telling them about, you know, where we would like to see development happen. We've got a priority development area around the Caltrain Station. We have ideas about what we'd like to see in the industrial 101 corridor. In the southern part, we'd like to see a lot more retail development. In the northern part, we'd like to see a lot more professional office, biotech. So getting them focused is a big part of it.
If I may, a follow-up question on that. Why was the southern part of the, what I think of the industrial area, targeted for retail development?
That came out of the general plan process. We didn't want, the general plan committee, and then when it went to planning commission and council, the idea was not to have too much of an area devoted to commercial, because we didn't want to drown out our industrial base as well. So the idea was to allow for zones for each, but because we already have the San Carlos marketplace, we have Home Depot, the idea was to keep the general commercial centered down at that end. But with PAF going in and what's already existing up there, Novartis and the old Nectar space, that was a better place for professional.
See, so when you're talking about the southern end, you're not necessarily saying that, for example, the area west of industrial and south of Howard, you're not necessarily targeting that for retail?
No.
Because it is not currently retail?
Referring to the Britten corners and...
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
I just wanted to commend you and the whole commission on the work that has been done over the last few months to take a look at the situation without the redevelopment money and look at how do we approach doing this, given what's going to become a new way of doing business? So thank you very much for all of the work that everyone did.
Well, my only comment is, first of all, thank you. Nice to see that EDAC continued to do good work after I left. In fact, I think they did better work, which really makes me wonder about my role on EDAC. I know that there's a lot of capable people, a lot of brilliant people on EDAC, and I applaud your work. Thank you.
No questions?
No questions? Okay, thank you. Discussion? We do have a, I believe this is, is this the, well, Pat Potter's not here, she's left.
Yeah, there's two subsets of...
Yeah, I was going to take public comment on this, but she's not here. Well, there is two items, 8C1 and 8C2, so, which I don't think Mark has presented on 8C2. You want to get 8C2 as well? And then we'll have discussion? That'd be fine.
Yes, sir.
What's the council's pleasure? We're going to be taking action on two different items, that's the thing. So we can do one.
Well, I guess, yeah, it's just a consideration.
Two is a report, and one is an action item.
I'm sorry? I'm reading alternatives under 8CI, approve the retail attraction plan. Are we not doing that?
We are, but not to... Staff clarified that it's a report. It's you're discussing the item.
Okay.
Providing general direction.
So we're not taking any action? Okay. So why don't we go ahead and get 8C2? And then, the only reason you're looking for any discussion then is to get some broad guidance, feedback? Okay, very good. Yeah, yes, Mr. Suwicky, if you want to give us an update on 8C2 as well.
8CI and 8CIi?
Yeah, I look at that as Roman numeral two, I guess. I'm sorry to confuse you. Yes.
So the item on consideration of retail attraction plan, initial retailer target list, process to identify other desirable business sectors to target for recruitment and retention. This report is presented pursuant to the following city council's six-month strategic objective, which was to present to the city council the city's plan to attract and retain businesses, including a list of desirable business sectors to target for recruitment and retention. While there is some overlap, a different process and methods are used for recruitment and retention of retailers and restaurants compared with other business sectors. This report identifies actions already that have already been taken and what future actions are recommended for both retail and non-retail business sectors. At the September 6, 2011 EDAC meeting, they reviewed lists of retailers identified by Buxton Analytics that showed a favorable match to San Carlos's demographics and consumer propensity, and also had a high distance from their nearest location. EDAC reviewed the list of retailers expanding in Northern California provided by HDL. What appears in your staff report is a list of 10 food and restaurant businesses, five furniture businesses, 10 merchandise businesses that were narrowed down from these lists. Again, it's important to emphasize the city's ability to attract and recruit businesses remains heavily dependent on identifying or creating available space that meets their specific needs. However, a target list can be useful, gives staff's direction to generate analytical support for bringing these businesses to the community, or informs the creation of space that might fit the needs of these kinds of businesses. It also sends a positive signal to the brokerage community about what we're interested in, what we're looking for. The EDAC also had approved a business attraction plan that accompanied this target list. They didn't want to just have a list. They wanted to say, you know, what is staff going to do with this list? For that, we created a 10-step action plan that's also provided in your staff report as to how we would go about identifying space and identifying who the contact person is at these businesses and trying to match them up. For other business sectors, retention and recruitment, the general plan and zoning code update process, through that process, EDAC had provided input on the types of businesses the city should seek to retain and attract. That was provided as attachment one to that staff report. The focus was on revenue generators, revenue generating businesses, high-tech, clean-tech, biotech, as well as incubator and more building supplies businesses to add to the cluster that we have. That advice is now represented in the zoning code, which indicates what commercial districts we are looking to recruit these kinds of businesses for. Kind of gives a roadmap and a guideline to brokers and developers. As noted earlier, the recruitment effort for other business sectors is different from the retail recruitment effort. It's more difficult to identify non-retail businesses that are expanding or moving or are a good fit for San Carlos. As I mentioned before, a primary method for identifying such businesses is through networking with brokers and businesses that operate in these desirable sectors, as well as using the ambassador team that goes out and talks to the existing businesses about who they know that might be interested in expanding or coming to San Carlos among their suppliers or among their current clients. And we can also learn a lot more about how we're doing business, how we might be able to improve, and what sort of things we could be doing better to attract similar businesses. That concludes my report on that item.
Any comment on that particular item then, before he goes on to the next one, which is, has to do with locating or attracting vocational schools?
No, my only comment would be that I would hope for this and the earlier plan, that we will be seeing updates on how things are going, how we can support this effort collectively as a group and individually. So I hope this won't just be something that comes back again next year at the same time.
Okay. I had a couple of questions. One, and maybe this will prompt some discussion as well by the council, but at the EDAC level, was there any discussion... as well by the council, but at the EDAC level, was there any discussion about recruiting businesses that we know might compete with existing businesses in San Carlos, especially those that are family-run?
That specific topic did not come up, no.
Because I'm looking under merchandise on page two of this and there's one in particular business under merchandise. I'm looking at that and I'm thinking, okay, that's great. We've got a little business downtown on Laurel Street that does that same thing. They do other things too, because they have music school and so forth. But they do, you know, trade in this area. And, you know, I'm mindful of a trip I made one time into the Carolinas and I went to Old Town Salem. And when I was there, I learned that one of the things they did in Old Town Salem is they were very careful in how they allowed businesses to take place and how they allow even apprenticeships to take place. Because they didn't want, if they had a good cobbler in town, they didn't want to create competition for them, albeit we're, you know, a capitalist society. But by their approach, it was, you know, if you got a good cobbler in town, why put him out of business by inviting another cobbler to town? And I know the way that our council's been in the past is, you know, we've been fairly free market, although we have taken action at certain times, given certain things, like when a dollar store wanted to move into the old Foodville site and we made sure that didn't happen. And now we have Bianchini's and everybody's happy. And in this regard, when you're, it's one thing to allow the market to do what it's going to do, but if we're going to go out and actively recruit and try to bring in a competitor to a family-run business that's in town, I would be curious how the council feels about that. And you've said there was no discussion on that at EDAC.
The one thing that I would add is that we did look at a sales tax leakage and surplus report about what we have a lot of or what we have a little of. So, on a grander scale, you know, we did take that into account. Also, when you look at individual businesses using the Buxton data, it will indicate whether there is a competitor that is nearby. And if there's not, then that usually is a good sign. Otherwise, it might get flagged. But we may have missed that one.
Okay. Aaron, did you have something?
I'd say that's, that's a real tough one unless you've got a well-oiled crystal ball. Sometimes there are some synergies in having like businesses because people know, gee, I will have more of a selection, whether it's the type of product or service it's offered or the price range that's available. And so, to try to forecast that, you can either be very successful or end up shooting yourself in the foot. So, I think that's why there's been more of kind of a, an open approach that we have taken in doing that. So, it's, and I think also some of the businesses that are identified here are not necessarily ones that would move into downtown. I think some of these are looking for a larger footprint than what we have available in the downtown area, so that they may not be within walking distance of one another. But it will be interesting to, to see if this works as an effort to begin. I would hate to see us give EDAC two small, you know, say, gee, only work with these six, because we're afraid to step on the toes of our existing businesses. So, I'm comfortable with the list.
And as I recall on EDAC, this, you know, this was really sort of a wish list. We didn't have any solid indication that, that these businesses were going to, you know, be locating here soon. And just singling out one of them, for example, Guitar Centers as Councilman Clapper, or Councilperson Clapper has said, you know, they would be in a different location, probably over in industrial area. Most likely, they'd want a bigger store. They wouldn't be in the downtown section. Quite frankly, the one establishment or the one guitar seller that might want to be worried is Gelb in Redwood City, because they do sell, you know, quite a bit of guitars. But, but again, like, like Councilmember Clapper says, it's, it's really tough to predict which businesses that you bring in are going to threaten others. And in some cases, they can be complimentary. Maybe more people buy guitar, so they want to come over to the, to the guitar store here to get their lessons. So, we just don't know.
Very good. Okay. Well, I instigated some discussion, which is what I was hoping for. So, that's good. Yes?
Are we moving into discussion mode?
I suppose so. I was asking questions and I did have one...
You're not finished with your question?
I'm not quite finished with my question. I had another question and that is, with any of these items, might there be any, is there enough gravity behind any of these that we might do something like what we did as a community to bring in Trader Joe's? Because if you remember when the, the location where CVS is right now, when that first opened up, I forget what was there before. I think a Safeway. Yeah, and a Safeway left and it was sat vacant for a little while. And then the community thought, we want a Trader Joe's and that would be the perfect location. Well, we got a Trader Joe's. It didn't end up there. CVS ended up there. But nevertheless, even though that space got leased, the community kept charging on the Trader Joe's idea and we ended up with one down here on El Camino. Any of these rise to that level? Or do we see ourselves doing something like that again?
Again, I think it's important to identify the space first. If we had a big vacancy like that, that would be a great time to start making a push for a particular business to go into that space. But to start targeting the business before you have a space, they don't even want to talk to you. The first question is, well, you know, what have you got for me? And if it doesn't meet that criteria, they, they move on.
Well, how did that happen then, Mr. Suwicky, with Trader Joe's? Because I guess when, when we first approached them and it was, actually, just if I remember, it was a couple of residents who started a letter writing campaign. And the CVS plate was open, but it closed up and then they, you know, like I said, they ended up on El Camino.
I guess through the chair to give you some history on that. Initially, the city was recruiting Trader Joe's before they showed up in either San Mateo or Menlo Park. And to Mr. Suwicky's point, the reason we didn't get them in the first two rounds is because we didn't have the right space. And then we started the postcard campaign with Mr., which Mayor Grocott is talking about. It was inspired by what happened in the Lucky store, as some of you will recall, where Lucky sent out postcards to residents and so many of them came in that it influenced the council. And we actually had two PTA moms, Genox, then who some of you know, and Linda Garvey, and they were the ones who set up the postcards. And I think by the time Trader Joe's got about 2,300 postcards, they said, you can stop with the postcards. We will come. But it, even after that, it took them another year or two to find the space. And the space in that case was created when there was a fire at the Lyons Restaurant. And, you know, that suddenly came on the market. So, again, I guess to both the mayor's point and Mr. Suwicky's point, you kind of need all of the above. You need the space. You need the interest. You got to kind of put it all together. So, I guess that's possible. Just one final comment. One thing I have heard in the community, although I don't know if they've approached Jean and Linda yet, is I have heard some people in the community suggest that the one thing on EDAC's list that some people have told me they thought would be worthy of such a campaign would be an Apple store. So...
I was just going to say.
We talked a lot about that.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going next. So, you beat me to the punch. So, to review that history, then it does seem a little bit like there's neither the chicken nor the egg, because, you know, it sort of went back and forth, chicken, egg, chicken, egg, chicken, egg. And finally, we landed with what we wanted. So, I suppose if we wanted to look at Apple and start some kind of campaign as a community and say, we would really like to see Apple here, you know, and they came to us and said, where, where's the space? You know, maybe we say, well, we've got a space on Wheeler Plaza. It's temporary, but, or, you know, it might be temporary, depending on how that goes. But, you know. And that was, well, I guess we could, I could bring that up during comments, something about what I just said. Mr. Olbert, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. So, are we ready for discussion?
Did you want me to cover the, the third report, the vocational schools?
Let's, let's stay on this, since we've got some momentum going on it right now, and then we'll, we'll bring you back up for that one. Were you chomping at the bit for discussion on this then, or?
A little.
Little. Okay. Well, we'll go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Actually, listening to the, the history of stories that were being exchanged there really helps crystallize for me a point I want, a couple of points I wanted to make here. I think there's been a lot of really good work that's been done over the years by EDAC and by Mr. Suwicky and the other members of our, our development team. But a couple of things that strike me are, first off, there's a very heavy focus on all of this work that we're seeing on retail. And in my mind, the, there's sort of almost two sides to economic development. There's, there's the, there's the side of improving quality of life in the city for the residents, which probably leans more on the retail, draws more from the retail side. But then there's the fact that from every time I've ever had a discussion with staff about where the money for the city actually comes from, retail is not where it's coming from. I mean, and then I don't, by any stretch of the imagination, I'm not trying to denigrate our wonderful retail outlets, because I love having them around and that's the quality of life side of things. Okay? But what I would really love to see us initiate a focus on is developing the commercial, whether it's industrial or biotech or green tech or whatever, but the non-retail side of things, which I think we have an opportunity to pursue and have a lot of assets that we could, we could, that would make us attractive. So, that's just an area of focus that I'd like to see enhanced. The other point that I wanted to make is, is I have a little bit of experience in the private sector in doing business development. I ran a mergers and acquisitions group for a biotech company for some years. And one of the things that, that, I won't say everybody, but many of us in that arena learned is that almost all good deals are targets of opportunity. There's, there's a limit to how much targeting you can do. Because, because it is, things depend so much on unusual events. There's a fire at the Lyons Restaurant. All of a sudden, the space becomes available. Nobody planned for that. Okay? Nobody planned for that. And so, what it drives you to do is to take an approach where rather than targeting, you actually use more of a shotgun approach. Okay? You say, well, I'm not actually trying to pick particular businesses. I'm, I'm out there selling broad-scale effort and I'm playing, you know, it's like a fisherman. I'm playing the line and wherever it happens to get, I get a bite, that's where I, that's where I start fishing. I would love to see us have a discussion about that, because to me, I think it's a, it's not a, really a radical change in focus. I tend to view it as an addition to what we're doing. You have to do the analytical work to know what you have to sell. But if you really want to get out there and close deals, that's what sales is all about. It's, it's selling. And in this particular venue, I think it's selling more in a, more in a shotgun approach. And certainly, as I said earlier, I would love to see us sell more into the non-retail side as well.
I would agree with that. Some of the manufacturing, delight manufacturing, you know, could be...
And I would agree with that too. I think this particular item on the agenda has a retail focus, since it is in specific response to something that was on the, an objective, you know, was on the six-month strategic plan, that was specifically focused on retail. And yet is one of only, one of the items on the four pages of the overall economic development plan. So, don't, don't lose sight of all the other stuff they were talking about doing earlier. It's just now that we've, we're getting down into the nitty-gritty stuff. So, I, I agree, we need to come back and revisit that. But I just want to keep on target.
I think that's a fair point, Councilwoman Clapper. I guess the, the thing I would point out is, because I, this is obviously, as you can tell, a subject that's one of great interest to me and I know to everybody else. Almost every time that we talk about economic development, whether it's on the dais or when we're interviewing candidates for EDAC or when we're just talking about it in general, it's, it's always striking, for me anyway, how quickly the focus goes to retail. Because...
I think that's a good point for us to keep in mind when, when in August, when we revisit the strategic plan. And I would love to, to work on that and drill down more into the, the non-retail side. So, let's, let's make sure that that happens.
Well, and I'm, I'm, I think it'd be great to discuss it in August. I'm actually hoping that since part of what we're doing here tonight is to, I think, is to give, is to accept for some reports and give some feedback to staff. I personally, that's one of my, that's one of my biggest pieces of feedback to staff, is I would like to see staff work on how do we broaden the focus and think about the issue that I'm raising about taking more of a shotgun kind of approach, to build on the analytical work that we've done.
To build off what you're saying, I would look to this, which they're looking for some feedback on, is that in the right order? And to what you're saying, Mr. Olbert, I would say there's something a little bit out of order, because somewhere in there, I think it would be, let's see, forum ambassador teams. And if I understand what the ambassador teams would do, as Mr. Suwicky was talking about, is we might have something that might incorporate Mr. Suwicky, the city manager, the mayor or council member, and going around and visiting our existing businesses. And as Mr. Suwicky was talking about under that item, sometimes when you're, you visit an existing business, you find out who their suppliers are, who they, who they do business to business with. And maybe we recruit from that. It's a little bit more of a rifle approach than a shotgun approach, as you were talking about. But, you know, if you find out, for instance, we got, I was telling the city manager not too long ago, Delta Star did a, had a open house. And I was surprised when I showed up that I was the only person from the city that showed up. There was no, you know, Mr. City Manager wasn't there, Suwicky wasn't there, no one from the Chamber of Commerce was there. There were just a handful of people and I just, you know, happened to land on it. And I, I think we all got an email and I was the only guy that responded. And even for me, responding was, you know, I talked to my wife, oh, this might be kind of interesting. I've always wondered what that building was all about and that's why we ended up there. There was no strategic, if you will, discussion. I didn't get a call from the city manager. None of us talked about it. But there it was, this opening. And yet, it was fascinating to go in there and see what they did, what their workforce was like, what were the materials they're using, you know, and so forth. And how great an opportunity that was. And we need to, I think, create those opportunities by having an ambassador team. And that might be a way that we can get into some of this commercial development that you're talking about, is let's polish the apple that we have, ala the discussion we had during the interviews for EDAC. You know, is it more important to polish the apple you have or is it more important to go plant a new apple orchard?
Well, you know, if I may follow on, the, I actually very much like the idea of the ambassador team. And I frankly think it's something maybe we ought to think about having more than one ambassador team. I mean, after all, there are five of us and I think we have more than five staff people. So, you know, we could probably form multiple teams if the, if the opportunity presented itself. And I think, you know, my response to, or my reaction to, do you polish the apple you have or do you look to plant a new apple orchard? That's kind of where the shotgun ethos comes in. And my answer is, you do both. And, and, you know, for example, one of the things I would love to see an ambassador team from San Carlos do, and I understand historically, there have been some discussions along these lines. We live in the hotbed of venture capital and angel investing, basically for the entire planet. And I can tell you from my limited experience in those worlds, that every time a new company starts, they have to figure out where they're going to be. And very often, a lot of times, it's, at least in my experience, it's how close is the place that meets the needs going to be to the CEO's house, which isn't something we can, you know, necessarily do, do things about. But there are opportunities to go out and talk to investing groups, to talk to venture capitalists, to make the presentation about what San Carlos is, where it is, the types of things that might be there, you know, using the analytical work that we've done, to be on their radar screen and to establish relationships. Because that's the other thing that's, that's very striking about business development is, I can think of many examples where major mergers or acquisitions took place, not in a planned sense, but because the manager, the senior managements of a couple of companies had, happened to be talking to each other about various things. And it was not, hey, tomorrow morning, let's start a merger plan. It was three years from now. But it was a relationship, grew out of a relationship that existed. The more relationships that we can develop, the more likelihood there is that we'll get some new apples.
So, one of the things I wrote down, yeah, I know, we got to keep moving here. One of the things I wrote down, I don't know if this is the way to do it, but is trade shows. And I had talked to the city manager about that too, that, you know, we might send, for instance, Mr. Suwicky, to some trade shows in order to develop some of these relationships you're talking about. But to my question again, do we want to take item, let's see, it looks like item four. Do we want to move that up at all or do we want to leave it where it is? Or, which is ambassador teams and having, you know, some representatives to... ambassador teams, and having, you know, some representatives to go around? I'm getting a nudge from council members, we need to move on, but we're going to have this report. I want to do something with it. Are we going to do anything with it at all, or not?
Through the chair.
I think it's great the way it is, and I would encourage EDAC to move forward and give us a report, and we can fine-tune it.
Yeah.
If we feel the need later, if we feel things are not happening.
Say that again? I'm sorry. I didn't catch it at all.
I would like to see EDAC take this plan, work with it, and if there's something, I'd like to get feedback from them about how they would suggest changing the priorities based on their success with the different items.
Okay.
Instead of us worrying about fine-tuning it right now, I think if there was something that fell below number seven, that we felt should be higher up, that I think would be of significant substance to share with them. How they sequence those top seven, I, I'm not going to fine-tune that for them. I am, I'm content with the seven that they have there, and as they have the resources, I encourage them to, to work on those.
Okay. Well, the last comment I want to make on this, and then we can get the next item, is it was mentioned that we don't have many vacancies, and that may be true, but I would say, on the other hand, we have some key vacancies, and one of them we've created ourselves, which is the furniture store on, on San Carlos Avenue. And when you have something like that, that's a, a big floor plate, right there on San Carlos Avenue, a main drag in town, and it's empty, doesn't look very good. And it doesn't bode well for, for helping the economy, or making San Carlos look like a vibrant community. It looks rather odd. And if, if council wants to chime in on this, feel free to, but what I'm going to say is that if we could even work, if staff could work on having somebody in there who knowingly is going to go in there, and it's not, they know that it may, may or may not be for a long duration, there's got to be some kind of outfit that, that could meet their needs if we did some looking around. But to me, that looks awful, to have right there on your front doorstep, an empty floor plate like that. So...
Through the chair, I proposed or moved that we extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
Does that require a second?
Yeah.
All second. We have to vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move along with item about the vocational schools.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report is presented pursuant to the following city council's six-month strategic objective, to develop and report to the city council on an outreach program to identify and attract vocational schools to locate in San Carlos. Staff did some research on vocational schools currently located within, within San Carlos. There's five aviation training facilities. There's a San Mateo County Electrical Joint Apprenticeship and Training Center, and an art school. In addition, nearby community colleges, Canyatta and College of San Mateo, offer many vocational training and certificate programs. And we've also found that there are a lot of vocational schools located in the larger metropolitan areas of the Bay Area. During the general plan review process, the, the GPAC, the EDAC, and the Planning Commission all expressed concern about having nonprofit and government land uses that remove prime parcels from the property tax base. With that information, they designated large areas that where, where vocational school or other type of facility could not be located. However, they did say that trade schools are conditionally permitted in other locations, including the industrial arts, light industrial, and heavy industrial zones. If attracting vocational schools is designated a priority action item, the staff report has a six-step process that we would go to. Four of those steps would be defining the need, talking to high schools and community colleges, the Workforce Investment Board, and local trade unions about what the needs might be. And then we would have to find a space, and then decide whether we wanted to provide any other assistance. At its June 26th EDAC meeting, the EDAC considered this. Commissioners noted a few things. One, there does not appear to be a high local demand for a vocational school. They believe vocational schools serve regional needs versus a direct, having a direct local benefit. It was noted that employers rarely relocate a business for a non-professional workforce base. They will do so for a professional base, but not a non-professional. And that pursuing a vocational school would divert limited staff resources without a clear economic benefit. They unanimously recommended that, given staff resources, this task should be a lower priority item.
Okay. Questions? All right, let's move on to item 8D.
Mr. Mayor, if I might suggest a couple of changes to the order of agenda, given the hour, I would recommend we take 9A and then 11A, and circle back around to the reports and the rest of the items on the agenda, which I don't think that there's too much timely information needed on the other items. And in addition, if you would like, we could possibly move 10B. I know you're looking to discuss that, the ad hoc commissions. Might put that at the front of the retreat next week. I think we're meeting next Thursday.
Right.
Good fit there, along, you know, to sort of break the ice and start the discussion, talk about some council assignments.
So again, you want to take, you're suggesting we take which items, 9A and 10A?
9A and then 11A out of order. Two items that we do very much need action on.
All right. Let me get to my agenda.
It's the sewer rates and the, Mr. Mayor, it's the sewer rates and the Holly 101 change project.
So 9A and...
11A.
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 Okay. Very good. Let's do it.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. There are a number of factors contributing to the need for the current recommended rate increase. And San Carlos, for instance, has a debt service to the SBSA, the San, the South Bayside System Authority, and it represents a total obligation of almost $60 million over the next 30 years. And our current fiscal obligation is about $938,000 a year. We also completed a capacity assurance plan recently that indicated that we have about $8.8 million in sewer collection system upgrades that we need to complete in the next five years. We also need to sustain a reasonable fund reserve in case of emergencies and unforeseen problems. The sewer rates that are currently in effect aren't sufficient to cover our share of the ongoing payments, and to begin our ambitious capacity assurance upgrade over the next five years with the Baykeeper Consent Decree. Proposition 218 sets out a process for citywide consideration of a fee increase. At least three separate actions are required. First, an initial meeting to start the process and approval of the rate increase notification, which went out to all the property owners in the community, and the rate increase ordinance was considered for the first time on May 14th. So that's when the ordinance was first introduced. There was a 35-day period of review of protests from the property owners, and letters were, were received, and they're included in your pack at this evening. Tonight marks the public hearing to consider the protests, and following the consideration of the protests, there would be a second reading of the sewer rate increase ordinance. And the rate increase would then go into effect retroactive to July 1st of this year. The rate chart that you see on the screen reflects a comparison between the current rates and the proposed rates, reflecting a 6.6% increase for the next fiscal year. And at the meeting of May 14th, the city council considered a number of different rate options of 4.6 and an 8% increase. Following discussion and consideration, the city council selected the 6% increase as a way to balance the infrastructure repair needs, and to take a more levelized rate increase approach. Sewer rates in San Carlos are, and would continue to be compatible with neighboring agencies, as you can see from the slide there. Rates would increase with the proposed change, but that would not change the relative position of the city of San Carlos as compared to the neighboring cities in this 2011 study. Tonight, the recommendation is to hold a public hearing pursuant to Proposition 218, and to conduct the second reading of the ordinance to increase the sewer rates by 6%. Staff is available to answer any questions of the mayor and council.
Questions?
No.
I just have one.
Sure.
I didn't see anything in here exactly on how much per year the revenue increase would be for the sewer fund.
Well, that would be included in the ordinance. If you're talking about, in, I'm sorry, maybe I should clarify. How did you mean that question? I mean, do you mean it in total, or do you mean it per use?
I, I mean that a 6% rate increase would bring in how much additional revenue to the sewer fund annually.
That's also part of the NBS report that was provided to you.
Somehow I missed it. That's what I'm asking.
And let me take a look here. Okay, 6% for the fiscal year of 2012 and '13 would be $3,689,576 total.
3.6 million?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, through the chair. So it would be an increase of 3.6 million?
No, that would be the total revenue from the total, yeah.
6% would be like 200,000, 230,000?
Yes, that's about right.
6% is 200,000, you said?
230, probably.
Yeah. All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, and, let's see, do I have any speaker cards on this item? I don't. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. So, being that this is a public hearing, if there's anybody, yeah, well, if there's anyone who would like to speak on this item, you need to come up right now. Excuse me? The form, you can do it after.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the city council person. My name is Suresh Khandi, and I represent America's Best Value Inn, located at 1562 Al Camino Real, and our SS's parcel number is 051368040. I have filed a written protest with the city clerk's office, as required by the Proposition 218 notice, and I'm sure you probably have seen my protest as filed with the city. I am here in the city for the last 25 years on Al Camino Real, having this hospitality industry, and I have been serving the city, community, and the visitors for all these years. My concern here is twofold. One is general concern about the rate increase, and second is specific concern regarding the way the, our property and other hotels and motels are charged and assessed here. I, I strongly believe that the way the city has been assessing these charges is wrong, incorrect, and perhaps illegal. However, everybody knows that all the cities, state government, and federal government, and all the businesses are having a hard time for the last three, four years, and hotel industry is no exception. The 2007, 2008, 2009, in my 25 years' history, it was the worst year to survive, and we stayed here. We put the money out of our pocket to run the businesses and stay in business. And that's one of the focus you want to see. The businesses who are here and established, they can stay in the city, so you don't have to go and look out the new businesses. While we were losing tremendous amount of money in all those three, four years, our taxes, and particularly sewer taxes, went up an average of 7%. I would say that in the last five years, the sewer taxes has gone up about 35% in the city, which is ridiculous. And what do we get for that? Nothing more than what we are doing here. Our water consumption is less, because we are poor business, but our charges has gone up. Our revenue has gone down. So it's really out of balance situation that I'm, I'm really concerned about. Comparing the other cities, our rates are high, and the way they are going to go is going to go further from us. And that makes it difficult to compete with us in Belmont or Redwood City. That's the city we compete with, and it makes it very hard for competing with us. I have a chart that I'd like to give it to you, that shows you some information about my particular case, and then give you an idea why I think the city is wrong as far as assessing the taxes that they are charging us for the sewer. If you look at the charts, or the notice that they provided to us, there is a residential portion, and there is a commercial portion. And commercial portion is subdivided into three different parts. The first part talks about bakery and restaurant, which is, you know, right now paying 9.56 CCF, going to go another 7%. The second part talks about the market, which is 9.38, another, another way it's going to go up another 6%. The third portion is what we are concerned about, where the hotels comes into that. I think that's the way it's charging us. And that is a very important part of it, which really says that all others, greater amount of $601.17 per year, or $6.10 per CCF. That's our current rate. So what is happening here is they are not following this rate that is there. And the reason for that is $601 is one criteria, and the other criteria is how many gallons we use, or CCF we use, and compare that amount, and whichever is higher, they should be charging us. What I found out while looking into this, and we really concerned about all this, but every year going up and going, business is going down, and we started to look at it. And the city has been charging $601 per rooms we have, rather than for business. I have only one business. I don't have 32 businesses in my, in a hotel. And so I should be charged only $601 or my consumption. That's where all the cities does. We have other businesses, other cities, we have same businesses, San Bruno, Manlo Park, Redwood City, all cities does that way. And I think what's happening here is totally wrong. And that is my general question, a specific question for the hotel industry, that we need to address this year. So it's not only the, the rates are going up, also the way they are charging us is ridiculous. And now it has reached a point where my property taxes are lower than my sewer taxes. And that's, that's really the, the comparison that opens anybody's eyes, that how we are, we are running the business here. So if you, if you don't have a problem, I would like to give you a statement, and go over some items for you.
Sir, normally we allow two minutes for public comment, and you're...
I'm sorry?
We allow two minutes for public comment.
Okay.
So you're way over on your time.
I will just go over this list that I gave it to you.
Okay.
So it would just, I will, in a nutshell, I would tell you what it is. It's my 2009, 10, and 11, how many gallons we use or CCF we used according to the water consumption, and what they're charging in the, in the bottom. And my calculation shows that for 2009, I should be charged $7,200, and I'm actually charged $17,852. So I've been charged $10,556 excess than what's allowed by the ordinance. In 2010, same way, I should have been paying $8,572, and I've been actually charged $19,102. So I've been excessively charged $10,530. 2011, same way, I have been excessively charged $8,892. So once again, this is the facts, this is what's happening. On page two, I have given the breakdown of how much sewer taxes I have paid, and surprisingly, from 2006, which was $9,300, and with this proposed, it would be $21,665. And that's, that's basically the impact on my business. And the third statement, I just give you my property tax bill, so you can... And the third statement, I just give you my property tax bill so you can see where we stand as far as our sewer assessment. So, with that, I would just request that please do not approve it, but more than that, I want to make sure the city follows the rules and regulation and corrects the formula that the way they are charging it. I don't know who got this involved into, but this is a wrong way to charge it, and it needs to be corrected.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other folks who would like to address the council on this issue? I'm going to have to keep you to two minutes. We let your, the other fellow go quite a bit longer. Could you state your name and city residence?
Yeah, good evening, Honorable Mayor and the council members. My name is Mahendra Patel, and I acquired a piece of property here not too far from the city hall three years back, and what I just came across was the, I got other businesses. I was not too involved with this one, but then Mr. Gandhi pointed this out to me, and I noticed that my tax bill, my secure tax bill, is as much as the sewer taxes. And basically, both those totals to 10 percent of my revenue. And the other thing I would like to mention is that I'm paying $7,000 in water usage, and I'm paying almost $21,000 in sewer taxes. And the third thing is comparing rates, I have seven other properties in the Bay Area, and comparing the rates with all the other properties is three times more in San Carlos than in Menlo Park or Redwood City. Just wanted to bring that up, and I would appreciate that you look into this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilman. My name is Delid Daya, and I own a hotel in San Carlos, Hotel San Carlos. We've been a community since 1990. We also developed another hotel with my brother under that country and in suites, and from there on, we love this community, but the burden on us as taxpayers has gone so bad that, you know, we felt that is it worth developing into a city that doesn't help their customers or their business people? Just like the economic developer person said, we need more developments, more, newer, newer properties, newer things coming in, but it doesn't help when these taxes are so high, you're not going to encourage anybody to come in. So, from the property to sewer taxes, I disagree that we should not increase, but also like Mr. Suresh Gandhi and Mahendra Patel, it's just outrageous, and I'm paying $30,000 on sewer fees, and that is ridiculous. I think it's the calculations that are being done that is, that the council and the mayor needs to look at. We are paying, for 50 rooms, we are paying $600 per unit, whereas a residential is only paying for one room. So, that's where the disparities are, so I think the manager, anybody, has to look at this, and we are going to keep pushing this, and hopefully we get your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? So, we can close the public hearing.
Should the mayor make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unopposed. Okay, discussion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, are we, is it possible to ask staff to comment on the observations that were made by the last several speakers?
It is to some point, but my comment on that is that while I appreciate these gentlemen coming tonight, it's somewhat appropriate because we are discussing sewer fees, but it's, in using this word inappropriate, I don't want to sound like you, make it sound like you did something wrong, you didn't, but it doesn't fit to the item because actually what we're talking about is, is a public hearing to raise the sewer rates, and what you're discussing and what you want to have addressed is, as the last gentleman talked about, is how we calculate the sewer rates for this particular business that you all are in, being motel and hotel business. And that's something that we could discuss here a little bit, just to, you know, say, hey, we've heard these folks, and we would like staff to bring this item back to us. We do see it as an issue, but it really does not have, it's not pertinent to the issue we're looking at, which is raising the rates. Mr. City Manager, a comment on that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, that was an excellent sort of summary of the general topic, which is, which is much broader than this specific issue. I know the staff's had an opportunity, Mr. Sebey's had an opportunity to have some conversations as, as this issue's been brought to our attention. The good news is that the city council's already authorized in, in this year's budget a study of the sewer rates, and this will be one component that we'll study. We'll look at what other cities are charging, how they're charging it, how we compare, and that'll all be brought back to the city council at some point this year when the study's done, well in advance of setting the rates for next year, so the council have an opportunity to consider this issue. In light of this year's rate setting, there's really no opportunity to break one component out, as I think you were alluding to, in terms of the overall rate package that's before us this evening.
All right, and then, so does that help, Mr.?
Actually, that's precisely the input I was looking for.
Okay. Now, I did want to bring up some things I noticed in these letters, if there's a way we can address them, and again, they may be a little bit off topic or perhaps not. The one I would consider a little less off topic, and that is, we got a letter from a fellow who's 88 years old, and he's saying, look, I'm on a fixed income, and any kind of increases is overbearing for, for where he stands, and I wonder, you know, if we have other elderly residents in San Carlos, is there a way to, at this point, discuss and perhaps protect retired individuals or, or people that, even if they wrote us a letter? I know, you know, like, for instance, with the school measures, sometimes when they pass these bond measures, they say, here's the bond measure, but if you're a certain age, you can petition, you can write in and ask to have a reprieve from the increase or from the bond measure at all. Do we have an opportunity to do that at all?
I don't believe you have an opportunity to do that this evening. I mean, there wouldn't be any underlying data to inform the council as to what the impact of that type of decision would be. That's certainly something that we can look at in the rate study. You know, there's, you know, I just heard a couple of things thrown around up here that would be ways in which we could, in a fairly easy way, create some type of program like that if the council wanted to, that would be, we'd be able to monitor and implement. And I'm sure it's not totally unusual to do, but it's not something we could do tonight on the fly.
And the last item was this other letter, which was quite interesting. The fellow's talking about the IRS code and what can be deducted from your, your income tax, whether, depending on whether it's a, allocated to maintenance, the fee is allocated to maintenance, or if it is just a flat rate. I don't know if you saw this letter or not. Is there any way we can address that? And again, it may be not have anything to do with what we're doing here now, but...
I think we'll certainly look into that, but I don't think there would be any way to address it tonight. It's an interesting issue. I'd probably want to talk to a tax attorney before we even attempted to go, based on what's on that letter.
Okay. And again, these, these items, because of these letters, you know, they came to our attention because of what we're doing here with the, with the fees, but there aren't, they aren't completely on target.
Through the chair, as I recall, the letter that you were referring to, I think the writer was actually looking for some specific response from staff on cost breakdowns.
Right, but if we provided that, we're not going to, it's from a Helen Crispin, and if we provide it to Helen Crispin, we're not going to, we're providing only to Helen Crispin. We would somehow put it in, we would broadcast it somehow so that other property owners in San Carlos...
I think we'll look into the issue, and possibly it's something that we would include in next year's rate notice, is what, what I think I hear. But I would also agree with Councilmember Olbert that we should respond to this question specifically as well.
We should, that's true, yeah. I understand what you're saying there, okay, more directly. All right. Discussion on the item?
No, I have no comment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a motion?
You may, yes.
See if I, we are adopting an ordinance, or is it? I move that the council adopt ordinance number 1446. 1446, ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos, amending section 13.08.250 of the municipal code, sewer service charges and fees.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Groffert?
No. Okay, that brings us to item, let's see, that was 9A, and then we wanted to pick up 11A.
Yeah, through the chair. I apologize, but could I ask the mayor, I know we're late, but what, why you voted no against the rates?
Well, you and I can discuss this off, you know, off the dice, if you want.
All right, well, I, again, I, I mean, if there was something that we all should know about that maybe would convince us to vote the same way, I'd like to hear it, that's all.
Okay, fine. We sat not too long ago in a discussion talking about raising people's salaries of our city staff, and for years, I've talked about, look, because we have money doesn't mean we should spend it necessarily on employees' benefits and so forth, because for years we've had unfunded capital projects, and to me, I know sewer is a, is a separate fund, but when I asked, the reason I asked the question I did about how much it will raise, the 6 percent, how much was, is that going to raise annually? And I get an answer of about $200,000. We'll spend more than that in raising salaries and benefits this year to our employee groups, and my feeling is, we've got people in this community that are trying to run businesses and trying to run their households on fixed incomes and so forth, and if we're going to go to our community and take $200,000 out of it, and then at the same time, we're going to turn around and give $200,000 and more in raises to our employees, I don't see it. So, that's the reason.
The only problem I have, the only problem I have with it, though, is what's your alternative?
My alternative is to, my alternative is just like I asked for in the budget, which is in the budget, rather than put in the, the raises ahead of time in the, in the...
Can we talk about the sewers? That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I am. You wanted to know, I'm going to tell you, Mr. Grisilli. If we had in the budget a clear number of what our expenses and revenues were going to be without first forecasting in the budget what our employee raises were going to be, then we'd know how much money we have, and we would know how much money we can put towards capital improvement, and to me, sewer is part of capital improvement.
But it's a different fund.
The way I think, it's...
You know better. It's a different fund.
Sure is.
You know better than that.
But that doesn't mean we can't take money from the general fund and put it in a, in a separate fund.
It's not...
We're allowed to do that. If we want to take money from the general fund and put it into capital improvement and put it into sewer, we are authorized to do that. We are the city council, and we can run the money the way we want to run the money, and that's the way I feel about it. You ask my opinion, and you ask why I voted no, and then I give it to you, and you sit there and get frustrated over it? I'm sorry.
Well, because, because it's not logical, and I apologize, but it's just not logical in my mind.
Well, it is logical, in my mind.
Because we have to, we have to go to baykeepers and take care of that, and we have to get a new sewer plant, and the money has to be spent. Believe me, nobody wants to raise rates on anybody. None of us up here do. But you look at this, and it's, I mean, again, you vote the way you want to vote, you have that right. I just wanted, I appreciate the information that you gave me, so that at least it's in the public, so at least we know why you voted no. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Okay, I think we're moving on to item 11A.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Holly Street has had traffic congestion for some time, and the Holly Street interchange improvements would provide the necessary traffic congestion relief at the Holly Industrial intersection and to serve for the anticipated growth in the city of San Carlos. Improvements are also necessary as part of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation environmental mitigation. Back in 2009, there was, the city council authorized an alternatives analysis, which, which was completed the same year, and the community was heavily involved in that study. A number of different alternatives were explored at that time. In 2010, the city council adopted the top tier of the alternatives that were listened to by the community, talked, we talked to the community, and the Transportation Commission made a recommendation to the city council. So, a couple of these alternatives emerged to the top, and today, we're at a milestone point, and at this point in the, in the project, it's time to prepare what is called the draft, PSR, Draft Project Study Report, with our preferred alternatives, and we need to do this for Caltrans, who is in charge of the interchange. We can't do anything without going to Caltrans. The PSR will take the sketch plans that we, that are used for the alternatives analysis to a more detailed level of engineering, and then Caltrans, as I noted, will be heavily involved in the process. Now, options for getting bikes and pedestrians over the interchange has been an important part of the discussion, and as anybody knows that has tried to get across there, it's very daunting if you're a pedestrian or a bicyclist to get across. And in addition to providing a complete street solution, which is improving the interchange itself to get the bikes and pedestrians across, two options for separated bike pedestrian crossings have also been considered, and they're referred to in your staff report as options 1G and 1H, and we'll talk a little bit more about those. But in the, again, this is to encapsulate, just in talking to Caltrans as part of going through and preparing to provide them with our alternatives and our plans, they've been resistant to a separated bike path, bike pedestrian path over the US 101, and that's where alternatives 1G and 1H come in. So, they've been resistant to that and would prefer that we just provide complete streets and allow for pedestrians and bicyclists to cross over the interchange, over the Holly interchange. What they're telling us is that if we continue on with these alternatives, that it could delay the process up to a year, and there's no guarantee that they would approve this. At this stage, the city has to be ready to put in a significant extra effort to go to Caltrans and ask for them to consider these additional alternatives. Tonight, we have Brad Levine and Adam, or Karsten Adam, they're here from Mark Thompson Associates, they're our engineers. I've asked Brad to go through the engineering with you and give you an overview of the project, so he'll, he'll talk about that very briefly. I also note that Transportation Commission Chair Margaret Pies in the audience, as well as Jack Baumgarten, they're here if you have any questions. Back in June, the Transportation and Circulation Commission considered the alternatives, went over an overview of the, of the interchange project, and they felt strongly enough to vote as a commission to recommend that alternative 1H is the city's preferred alternative to be presented to Caltrans in that PSR. And so, that's the recommendation before you, and so with the PSR that submitted a pack, the package, the Transportation and Circulation Commission is recommending that you authorize the city manager to sign the letter saying that option 1H is the city's preferred alternative. There will be other, another alternative, 1G as well, and also the complete streets alternative. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Levine to get up and walk through the presentation, and we'll be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Where he does it, we're going to need, yes, go ahead.
I move that we extend the meeting to 11:15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
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 Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I will try to walk through this really fast, so I'll probably skip a lot of things for the sake of brevity. Just stop me if you have any questions along the way. So, I was going to give a recap, but I think Al did that pretty well. A lot of alternatives were evaluated in 2009. A pretty complicated screening matrix was developed at that time that used weighted criteria to evaluate all the alternatives. The conclusions that we came to were to keep Holly Street as the main access to 101, do not widen Holly, modify the interchange to handle the future traffic, improve bike path access through the interchange, and implement the San Carlos Avenue Bike Boulevard to help people get to the crossing. So, the two original alternatives that came out of that, that we were going to carry forward with Caltrans in a project study report, were the Panth Baseline Project, which was the original mitigation that was identified for the Panth... the original mitigation that was identified for the PAMF project when the EIR was approved, and that used a shorter-term traffic projection, but what that mitigation called for was converting the east half of the interchange by eliminating the loop off-ramp, the northbound loop off-ramp, and widening the northbound loop on-ramp to two lanes, and I'll show you on the next slide how that improves and helps the problem. The current situation with four loops, it's a traditional cloverleaf interchange, and one of the problems with that is you have traffic coming on from the loop onto the freeway, and then traffic coming off at the same time, and they have to weave across each other here. That creates a conflict point, and as the traffic congestion grows, as the traffic demand grows over the years, that aggravates the congestion. So, if we get rid of that off-ramp, widen this diagonal off-ramp and bring it into a new signalized intersection where traffic can go left and right, east and west on Holly, then we can move that traffic over to this off-ramp and separate that weaving movement, and that helps improve the traffic capacity. The other problem that's, that's currently aggravating congestion is there is only two lanes from Holly Street, there's only two lanes heading eastbound across Industrial here to access the loop on-ramp, and then there's only one, there's only one lane to the northbound loop on-ramp, and that's the heaviest traffic movement. So, the project would widen this little stretch between Industrial and this loop so that three lanes of traffic can go through from Holly all the way to the, to the loop on-ramp, and then this ramp would be, would have a second lane added so that two lanes can get to northbound 101. The, the problem then for bikes and pedestrians is that adding that second lane onto the loop creates a, a much more complicated crossing point. For bikes, they would have to weave across two lanes of traffic to get over, to continue through, pedestrians would have to cross, you know, a wider two-lane entrance. So, one of the features that we added to the project was a separated bike pad path that would follow the inside shoulder of the loop, go underneath, and then pass underneath the ramps, so that bicyclists could get through the loops without ever having to actually cross with traffic. This is a couple illustrations showing what that would look like. This is the separate bike path that would come down under the ramps, looking through under the ramps, here's a perspective view of it. And then the other alternative, the other original alternative, was to do the same conversion on the other side of the interchange, so that you do a full conversion of the interchange and eliminate all the weaving movements in the interchange. So, with those two alternatives, we started the PSR process, we defined the purpose and need with Caltrans, which is primarily to address future traffic congestion at the interchange and at the Holly Industrial Intersection, and to improve bike pad connectivity across We redid the traffic forecast per Caltrans requirements, which looks 20 years out from completion, which is farther than the EIR typically requires. We've done a variety of special studies, looking at potential impacts in the interchange, and out of that have come up with two revised alternatives, and, and the problem with the original PAMF mitigation, which was only converting the east side, is that for 20 years out, year 2035, it, it would not meet the traffic demand, and Caltrans won't allow you to do improvements without addressing traffic to 20 years out. So, the problem is that when we widen, extend this third lane through to address the main traffic congestion problem in San Carlos coming out of Holly Street, that improves, but then that third lane going through, now they basically have the right-of-way, so the traffic coming off the freeway on this loop now gets backed up, waiting to try to get into that traffic that has the right-of-way, and that starts backing up, and then pretty soon that blocks off this loop on-ramp to southbound 101, and it eventually kind of ties up the whole interchange. So, this would be, you know, 20 years out when traffic's gotten worse. So, the solution is to actually do the conversion on both sides of the interchange. So, now, there's really only one alternative for the interchange for traffic problems, and that's the full conversion, eliminating the two opposite loop off-ramps from the freeway and, and converting both of those to diagonal, and then just having the two loop on-ramps, and then widening the northbound loop on-ramp to two lanes like was originally identified, bringing the third lane through, adding a third, adding an additional through lane on Industrial. So, that takes care of all the traffic problems, and then the bike pad problem is still pretty significant, so that's where the real differentiator is between the two alternatives now. So, what we call Alt 1H takes that bike path through the interchange, but instead of just going under these two ramps, it's now extending it across and under these, this ramp so that you can get completely from one side to the other through the interchange without having to cross any ramps. That's a close-up, and it would show the ramp connection that would pass under the ramps and over the freeway, but it would fit closer to the ground because it would, it would follow the existing road overcrossing structure and be parallel to it. That's a, that's a potential additional connection to the future East San Carlos Bike Boulevard right there, and this would still allow for commute bikers and pedestrians to stay on the shoulder of Holly and go through eastbound, and then westbound there would also be a route for bikers. And then the second alternative, 1G, would, would, the basic project would be, would just keep bikes and pads right on Holly Street, but it would allow for an optional separate POC, which would be a bridge over the freeway. It would have to be higher than the crossing here because of requirements for standalone POCs, and it would take longer to cross, and it would be farther away from the interchange. So, that's the, that's the Alt 1G option now. So, the issues going forward, one problem is that Caltrans is resistant to that separated path within the interchange, and overall, the project does need additional funding, which is, I think, being addressed through this, this item. A quick overview of the schedule for a reference, the project study report phase we're in now, assuming that completes by the end of this year, the environmental clearance would take about another two years, and that would include clearance through CECL and NEPA, which should allow for federal funding, and then final design typically takes about another year after that. So, if everything went smoothly, construction could start in early 2016, so that's kind of just a rough timeline going forward. So, I skipped a lot of stuff, I went a little fast, but I know we're getting really late, but we can also ask, answer questions if you have any...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I also wanted to clarify the costs associated with that. You saw some costs up there, but just to clarify some of the costs of the, of the project, I think, and we can have Brad, you know, talk more about the costs of these, of these things, but essentially, the complete streets component, which is just the interchange, and please correct me if I, I'm wrong, would be about 14.6 million, and you saw that number up there. So, that's just the interchange improvements, but if you add the alternatives, it adds cost. So, if you look at alternative 1G, there's added costs, so there's added support costs with that, and for Alt 1G, the cost is about 9.5 million, and adding support costs of 6.8 million, it gives the overall cost of Alt 1G 26.9 million dollars. The construction of the right-of-way and environmental cost for 1H, which, which is the one that Brad spent the most time discussing, which is the connected path to the interchange is 14.2 million with added costs, support costs, engineering, and other costs of about 6.1 million, so you get a total of about 20.3 million dollars for alternative 1H. And I just wanted to clarify some of those costs for you. Again, the recommendation is that you allow the city manager to sign the letter of intent that alternative 1H would be the city's preferred alternative, and that is being recommended by the Transportation and Circulation Commission, and that concludes the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
No.
Quickly, yeah, go ahead.
The incremental cost, or let me not even say incremental cost, of the 1H option is 20.3-ish million, how much would we estimate that the city will have to come up with from its own sources, in other words, that Caltrans will not be providing?
Well, it's really uncertain at this point, to be quite frank. We, we have about, I'd say about 1.5, let's say in the range, dedicated through transportation impact fees from the PAMF project alone at this time, and that's kind of what's keeping the project moving forward. As you, as you know, in the next item, we're going out for another $3 million grant that we hope the city receives from Measure A funds. What we anticipate is that we would continue to go as we progress through, we would continue to go for state and federal grant funding. Our transportation impact fees over the next, let's say, 20 years of growth is anticipated to generate about...
In the interest of saving time, it sounds like the answer to my question was...
No, no.
We don't know, and there's a possibility that it might be a small number.
Yes.
If we're lucky and do our job.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I had a quick question. 1H, that's the one Caltrans doesn't like?
Well, they don't like anything that, they don't like that one, that's right. They, I think that they like that one the least.
Right.
Because it attaches to their...
I understand, but they like that one the least, but we're still going to ask for it?
Yes.
Okay, because we think it's the best.
Yes.
Is that going to hurt us in, in the future of them giving us money or approving it?
Brad, you want to try and answer that?
It's not that complicated, is it, yes or no?
It would most likely just delay the project. Once you get the approval, it's not going to affect the money you get. Caltrans is not giving you any money.
I understand, but what I'm saying, they got to give you approval, they going to give you the approval even if you don't, if they don't like it?
They may not. You may spend an extra year...
So, we're asking for something that may not get approved?
Yes.
Okay, and when do we find that out?
Over the course of the next year.
So, within a year, we'll know whether we're up or down? Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay, I've got two speaker cards, Margaret Pye and Peter Tsipas. I want you guys race to the podium, decide who goes first. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move we extend the meeting to 11:30.
Second.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Margaret?
Good evening, I'm Margaret Pye, I've been the chairperson of the Transportation Commission for most of the past five years. The real, the real issue is what's better for bikes and pedestrians? I mean, this, the design is going to do what Mr. Levine says it's going to do, it's going to, it's going to smooth motor vehicle traffic, that's not a question, but what Caltrans is saying, they're calling option 1G the complete streets option, which I think is a misnomer, because they're implying that the modifications to Holly Street itself are going to make Holly Street a safe way for bicycles to cross 101, and I just don't believe that. I mean, we tried the best we could over the last three or four years to make modifications to Holly so that Holly itself would be safe for bicycles, we were not able to do that, it was not possible. So, what we're left with is, do we want the separate structure, which is, would be down near the Hiller Museum and is going to cost 6.6 million dollars more, or do we want the rather elegant curlicue sort of design that's closer to Holly Street and costs 6.6 million dollars less? As, as the city manager's letter clearly outlines, Caltrans's objections to option 1G are spurious.
You mean 1H?
No, they're, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, I'm, yeah.
It's late.
Thank you. Their objections are spurious, the, the things that they say are objectionable about the separate, the, the, like I call it, the elegant curlicue structure close to Holly Street. Any, any objections they have to that structure are exactly the same objections that they would have to the separate bridge down by the Hiller, and I just can't see why we should spend 6.6 million dollars more for something that is not going to be any better. I hope you saw in your packet, the, it was an email that came from Gladwin D'Souza of Belmont, and he drew some parallels between what Belmont went through modifying the Ralston interchange and what we're going through, and the parallels are, are striking. What, what Belmont did was, they did a very poor job in terms of bicycle and pedestrian access to the actual Ralston interchange because they were promised the bridge, which they only just got last fall. They waited 10 years for that. I don't want us to make modifications to Holly Street at 20, 25, 26 million dollars and then still have to wait 10 years for the bridge. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Tsipas?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable counsel, I hold you all in high regard regardless of the way I'm dressed, so please excuse me.
Actually, he looks comfortable.
I sometimes exploit that, I apologize. Many of you know I'm a civil engineer, I'm licensed to practice in four states. For many years, I have been a consultant to Caltrans, I've been a municipal engineer, often working with, but sometimes against, Caltrans. I was there on the Transportation and Circulation Commission when we hired Mark Thomas, who's been doing a great job, and I've been on, up until a couple months ago, on the commission until, throughout the, the project's development, but I'm here to, to speak to you as a civil engineer with experience with Caltrans. Caltrans has this marvelous library of manuals, chief among them are the standard plans and the standard specifications, and believe it or not, it has streamlined design in how Caltrans and government in that aspect, aspect works. They can lift drawings from the standard plans and put them on an engineering drawing, and that's fantastic. However, we're trying to solve a problem at Holly 101, and sometimes that model does not work. Sometimes we have to engineer a, a solution, and what this engineers is safety and an engineering solution to safety, and it doesn't necessarily come out of what ultimately is a sticker book. So, I hope you adopt option 1H, but that's where the, the fight will begin. I think the team of the consultant Mark Thomas, the Transportation and Circulation Commission headed by the magnificent Margaret Pye, and the San Carlos Camp, the City Council can really show Caltrans that this is the better solution. Caltrans can kind of be summed up in their way of thinking of, a quote by Garth of Wayne's World 20 years ago, if you were ever so frivolous to watch that, and they fear change. They have their mindset, they have their way of doing things, but sometimes that's not always the best way. So, I hope in the future you, in the near future, you adopt the 1H, and in the more distant future, you help San Carlos stand its ground and, and go for the, the better option. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We've had presentations, we've had public comment, discussion.
I, I have to say, I found very persuasive the observa... I have to say, I found very persuasive the observation that solving the vehicular traffic flow in the way that, let's call it the default Caltrans options from my hearing, increases the risk, makes the current situation for pedestrians and bicyclists worse, which is not really a good thing. It's not something I'd like to see happen. I do, I am sensitive to what I think was the point my colleague, Mr. Grisilli, was making, which is that we can ask for this and we might get turned down, but I still think it's the right thing to ask for. So I'm going to support that we go, we move ahead with 1H.
I like 1H.
Maybe we just need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that the city council authorize the city manager to sign and send the letter of support of Alternative 1H with a separated pathway to Caltrans along with the PSR.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay, in the interest of time, I think we will skip the rest of the reports and just...
Mr. Mayor, we have 11AI, I think we have.
Yeah, we, I know we do.
I'm sorry.
But I'm just suggesting, given the time, let's do the action items, including 11AI, and skip the reports.
Okay.
So 11AI. Go for it.
Mr. Mayor, in the interest of time, very briefly, we are applying for a Transportation Authority grant for Measure A in the amount of $3 million. And the reason it's $3 million, it's, Measure A says that you can only apply for what you can spend in a three-year period, and that is our estimate. In order for us to apply for this grant, the Transportation Authority has, requires a resolution of support for the application by the decision-making body, the city council, tonight. That is what is before you. The Transportation and Circulation Commission back in June considered the same resolution and is making the recommendation that you, you adopt the resolution, and that concludes the staff report.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll move a resolution number...
39?
39. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, supporting the Holly Street Highway 101 interchange project and submitting an application for Measure A highway program funding for the Holly Street Highway 101 interchange project.
Second.
We've had a motion, we've had a second. I don't think we're going to have any further discussion, so we have roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay, item 11B is...
We did.
We did.
We're ready.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
It's been a little difficult tonight with jumping around so much. So unfinished business would be 10A and 10B, is that right? Amendments to the strategic plan and, no, the sub, okay, so we just need 10A, and then we're, we're finished for tonight. And if you want, given the hour, if you can just give us the amendments that you're looking for?
Okay.
We don't need to go over what's been accomplished and so forth at this time.
All right, very good. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. There are four requested revisions to the strategic plan tonight. The first is to change the date. The fire chief will increase community involvement in the CERT program by 25% from July 1st to a future date. The fire department is continuing to focus on filling vacant, and vacant positions and training existing personnel, and therefore is requested to move the date. Okay. The second change is to move the date for increasing pedestrian, pedestrian safety around schools from August 15th to a future date. The third is to move the comment letter related to Caltrain and high-speed rail blended operations from August 27th to a future date. And the last requested change is to move the date to update the city's government greenhouse emissions inventory from the August 15th date to the August 27th to coincide with the council meeting. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. I, I would like to throw in a comment, it's not really a question. So this is, and does council have any questions on these?
No.
Okay. I just would like to throw in a comment on item two, and that is, I think something that would be helpful if it would be okay with the council, the direct staff, to do this, and that is, on opening day at the schools, to have some staff members at some of these sites observing, because while that may not be a typical day, it'll be more of a problematic day, being the first day of school. Sometimes a problematic day can highlight some of the issues that you have there, and they could, they could, you know, we can have some of our staff at these sites just taking notes, observing, and seeing what's going on. Because in those bottleneck situations, like I say, it compounds the problem, it observes for you, it shows you what the, what some of these problems are, given traffic and safety around the schools. So I just throw that out as a, as an idea in lieu of doing item two on the schedule. Any comment?
I think that makes sense.
I agree.
Yeah. Mr. City Manager, would that be doable, do you think?
I think that we could accomplish some of that, yeah, definitely.
Some of that, okay. All right, very good. With that...
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion, but I'd like to preface it by saying that I hope that even though we will not take the time to amend this, that we will, the city manager will continue to have resolving the fire service situation as a very high priority.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
I move that the council approve the four proposed amendments to the city's strategic plan and six-month objectives matrix.
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay, and just for the record, then, the items we didn't get to are the annual report on green programs and climate protection, and item E8E, report on the state budget and impact of actions by the state on the city of San Carlos. So those are the two reports to council that we did not get tonight, and we can get those at a later date.
Correct. And in the meantime, if, if anybody on the council would like to discuss those reports in any more detail, they can feel free to contact me at their convenience, and we can discuss those one-on-one.
We are adjourned.